Do this, but we're just coming back from, we're returning from closed session with no reportable action.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor.
And then that's it, okay. So do I need to call the meeting back to order since we've already done it beforehand? Okay, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we did rule call before we went into closed session, but I do want to note that Councilmember Cortez is here, so it should go in the minutes that that's, that she was there for the closed session also. Okay. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes they want to make to the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
All right, so we have a motion to adopt.
I second.
And a second. Councilmember Cortez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. I don't believe we have any recognitions or proclamations.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we're at the matters of interest to council members. Does anybody have anything they want to say? You seem like you do.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to thank Randy, our local VFW, Randy Green, for putting together our parade that we had on the Fourth of July, along with Russ Kelly, and it was just an amazing time. I don't, it was, it was really wonderful to be a part of it for us and to see what a unique and wonderful parade we put together. It was amazing. We had so many people, cars, bulls, goats, you know, horses, tractors. It was, it was such a fun day. It was awesome to be a part of it, and I think it was really great for the community, too. So I'm looking forward to next year. Already, my grandson was there, and so, anyway, just seeing all, everybody enjoying it was really wonderful, and thank you so much to the VFW for coming up with that great idea. It was, it was awesome.
Ready for a new tradition?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else have any?
I have one quick thing. I talked to Chief Dewar before last, last month's meeting, and he seemed to be really interested in the possibility of adding an electronic sign to the fire station. We currently have a sign ordinance that doesn't allow that to happen, and so if the council is okay with it, I would like to bring that ordinance back. The Planning Commission's already passed an updated one, but I would like to bring it back to council at a future meeting so we can hopefully get that moving.
You have one more, too.
I have one more, too.
Member of the schedule.
Yeah, I would think we should bring it back.
Yes?
Yes.
That's two. Are you talking about the ordinance?
Yeah, yes, the sign. Yeah.
Oh, yes, sorry. I was trying to think, what do you?
So I agree with you on that, but I think you had the other one.
Yeah, okay.
You said you were gonna bring it up.
Okay. So it has been brought to my attention that some council members might be having some issues getting here at 6:00. And so I was, if, if the council would be okay with it, we could bring back maybe adjusting the time to pushing the council meetings to a later date.
Not later date, later time.
I'm sorry, that's the right amount, a later time. So they were at 7:00, we moved them to 6:30, then we moved them to 6:00, but now it might be necessary to push them back a little further.
And I'll just explain, so it is very hard to get here by 4:30 on the times when we have closed session, and I will recognize that when we all ran for council, we understood that the meetings were 7:00. And with people going back to work full-time and things like that, the traffic being nasty, it is extremely hard to get here by 4:30 on those days. So that is one of the situations, and I would say also, sometimes it's hard to get here by 6:00. So we've heard from people in the town still, people are still coming up to us saying, can you please change it? And a lot of us are having issues, so 7:00 or would be better.
No interest, alright. So if there's, if there's no interest, that's fine, but just.
I have zero interest. Danny, Danny works out of town, and it was mostly for the staff, that was why. It wasn't for me, it wasn't for council, it was for staff. So that's my position.
Anybody else have any matters of interest? No. Okay. Moving on to Town Manager Report, then, Wes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, my, my Town Manager's Report is in the agenda packet. Just wanted to highlight a couple items in here. The org assessment update on it, Moss Adams has agreed to do the either modification or development of the four job descriptions that were presented in the upcoming budget, and they've also agreed to do the amendments to those changes that we need for the value of what was remaining in the contract for, which was $2,935. Originally, the cost was supposed to be $1,500 per job description, so that is a savings of $3,000 to the community that we were able to negotiate for Moss Adams to do it within the existing contract value. Just wanted to point that out. Horseshoe Bar Road I-80 interchange project, I think most residents or all residents by now should have gotten the notice that the first community outreach event is July 24th, 2025, and from 5:30 to 7:30, it will be here at this deal. And Richard and the team with Doc will be here to interact with the community, present some kind of conceptual ideas and get feedback. Also, as part of my manager's reporting on the town website, is frequently asked questions for this, that project as well, for people to kind of refer back to. Did I miss anything on that, Richard? You wanted to?
No.
No, we're good. Some unfortunate news, the, the town did not receive the Caltrans planning grant for the Taylor Road Downtown Civic Use Space Connectivity and Intersection Treatment Study on there. However, Caltrans has given the town an opportunity to meet with them and figure out how we can better develop our application. The goal is to get that done in the next couple of weeks, and Richard, I think, plans, if, if it's something that seems like it's achievable, to resubmit for the grant application in their September notice of funding and reapply for that grant and look forward. Last item I wanted to highlight tonight is the Magnolia Street Overflow Parking, which was the South Placer Fire District's vacant lot. Supervisor Anthony Dimatte has received commitment from a local contractor, Western Engineering, to improve the site. Western Engineering is estimated to complete the project this summer. And in addition to that, Placer County has committed to providing the asphalt grinding surface treatment for that project as well for free. Why that is really important for us is that asphalt grindings don't have dust, so given its proximity to the residential neighborhood, it's really gonna be a good finish, surface treatment for that project as well, too. With the, the labor and equipment and materials pretty much donated, staff is anticipating there will probably be a nominal cost for this project, if any, on there, so we're excited. And again, there's a frequently asked questions and attached to my manager's report for this item, and there's several other frequently asked questions, items on the town website as well for people to reference to. With that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for tonight unless you have questions.
Thanks, Wes. I do want to say again, thank you to Supervisor Dimatte for his help with that project. That's, that's big, big for us. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Thanks, Wes. Moving on, we have the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarians' Report.
So we are quickly nearing the end of our summer reading program, which is hard to believe. We only have a couple more weeks left, but I just wanted to let you know that we are almost to 70,000 minutes read. We're like 69,500, somewhere around there. And I'm just really impressed with everybody who's been logging their reading, and I'm really encouraged and really happy that that number is as high as it is. And I just want to remind everybody who is participating that July 19th will be the last day to log your minutes, and August 2nd will be the last day to collect your prizes if you're participating. As for our events, I wanted to let you know Bug Bonanza, which was scheduled initially for tomorrow, has been canceled unfortunately, so it's disappointing, but we hope that maybe in the future we'll be able to reschedule that with them. But we do on Friday have Storytime with Station 18. They've already been out once this summer, and if you can't make it Friday, there's always August 1st where they will be back again to read a story and to just check out the fire engines and all of that. It should be, it's a lot of fun to have them there, and the kids love it. We do still have room in our rock painting session. I forgot to write the date on that, but if anybody wants to paint garden rocks ages eight and up, that we do have calendars out in the foyer, so you can pick one up and see what the date is for that. Our Placer County Master Gardener Workshop for this month will be on July 12th at 10:30, and it is, fall is the new spring, so what to plant and when to plant it for your winter garden. We do have our final preschool sensory station on July, I believe it's the 16th, at 10:30 to noon, and then we will be doing tissue paper lanterns on July 18th from 2:30 to 3:30. And then our manga club will actually return on July 19th from 3:00 to 4:00. We've been getting a lot of requests and interest in that. And then finally, Spice Club, and will be on July 22nd, and Read to a Dog on July 26th. So we hope to see everybody there. Like I said, we've got calendars in the foyer and available on our website as well.
Thank you.
Any questions for, no? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, there's lots of chairs.
And there's a whole bench. Kids, come on and sit down.
If you want to come in. Alright, thanks, Sarah. We've got, next we've got the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update. Don't, don't lose your seat.
Yeah, for myself. Good evening. Okay, so we're plugging along with summer here. Thank you again to the American Legion for putting together that amazing parade. It was so much fun, and I wasn't able to attend, but I heard the pancake breakfast was great also, so it's just so fun to be in this town where there's all the different little things going on at the holidays. We do have our summer concert series this Friday. It is 27 Outlaws, so come out. It's gonna be warm, so stay hydrated, but should be a fun time. That'll be at 6:00 PM here in the Train Depot Plaza, followed by July 17th, we've got our monthly mixer. It's hosted by Loomis Flooring, so just right across the street, if you're interested in coming to that. And then just a couple of save the dates, we've got our Aloha to Summer Golf Tournament. That's gonna be hosted in September this year, September 12th, out at Lincoln Hills Golf Club, and we will have tickets by the next meeting. We'll have tickets live on the website. Our website's being overhauled, and so we're gonna launch it all together in about a week and a half. So we've got single player tickets for 150 and foursomes for 550. It should be a ton of fun out there, and then, it's crazy to think, but we're already talking about the Fruit Shed Fest in October, so we're working on planning for that. Vendor registrations will become available in the next probably three to four weeks, and definitely by the next meeting, but if there's sponsorship that is being asked about, they can just call the Chamber office, or if there are, like I said, vendors will be reached out to in the next few weeks as far as applications. So we've got some fun things filling out the summer for the rest of the next few months, so that's all we've got. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Heather, you're doing a great job, by the way. We appreciate you so much and hard work with the chamber. And I have to apologize, I have to thank the American Legion for putting on that parade and not the VFW. I'm so sorry. My apologies.
Thanks, Heather. Now, we're moving on to the Allied Agency Activities Update. We usually start with the Placer County Sheriff's.
So I have a long list of things to go through, so we'll kind of cover what we can here. Can you pull up the stats? So I couldn't pull last year's stats, so just to kind of give everybody an idea, you guys see these monthly, but for the month of June, we had 276 overall incidents, 11 of which were suspicious activity. We had 12 disturbance calls. That's pretty common, that's actually, I feel like that's pretty low for just kind of the summer season, right? 12 alarm calls and overall 77 traffic stops, and I'm gonna attribute that number to the fact that Jeff was off for a lot of this on vacation, so. But overall, relatively pretty mellow month for us, especially being a summer month. Some other topics to discuss while we're here, just the Fourth of July in general, so just go over a couple of stats that I have. Just counting, if we look at just the whole weekend, Friday through Sunday itself, we had 48 calls for service, really nothing meaningful, meaning just nothing really of note, right? It was just kind of like a standard weekend. It was pretty, it was actually ideal for us. One of the things Lieutenant Doolittle wanted me to mention, even though it's not the township, Bigford Ranch had a fire. The only reason he wanted to mention it, really, it was just illegal fireworks that may have hit social media. It's definitely, we had four homes evacuated, but no structures lost, and it's currently under investigation, so we're still following leads on that with CAL FIRE. But I think it had quite the Facebook presence, so we just wanted to touch on it real quick. Another fire of note that Chief Dewar might, might talk about is just the one behind railies. And just a point of interest, like our involvement, we had additional deputies respond to the area, just sit in the parking lot, make sure we were available in case evacuation, both the business and any local residents needed to take place, so we were pretty good about having a good response from us, so that's ideal. We just recently went through the command staff training for Unified Command, working with fire, and so obviously that training trickles downhill, down to the line level, so it's nice that we have a great working relationship with all of our local allied agencies, our fire agencies, and so that's definitely increased. In 20 years of me doing law enforcement, I never responded to fires traditionally, other than to do a road closure or maybe evacuate a home if I beat fire there, and so that's definitely evolved over the years. So we've had a very positive response in all of the recent incidents, so it's looking good. Notable events, we had Ride with Pride, and that took place in Auburn, but that's a countywide event. Over three days, we had approximately 36 kids a day, and a little over 20 of which were coming from this area, so that was good. We had a lot of, a good turnout for our, our Loomis kids. Just touching on water safety, we just had a couple more unfortunate incidents in the waters, recovery, most notably this weekend at Lake Clementine, so just another reminder, you know, just for everybody to continue to wear life jackets, they, they do save lives. I've ran our team now for a little over a decade, and I can't say I've recovered anybody in a life jacket, so they do make a difference. That is a, that is a strong factor. We recently, Lieutenant Doolittle, as a matter of fact, is the one that ran it, but we recently ran a fundraiser for our local chaplains. It's the Mike Davis Flag Football Tournament. We had that here at Del Oro, so special thank you to Del Oro to just allow us the use of their facility for free to fundraise. The tournament raised a little over $2,500 for our chaplains, and for those that don't know, the chaplains that respond for our agency are countywide, so they, they go, they're chaplains for all the local police departments, not just the sheriff's office themselves. So they are very, very busy, and they show up on not just like critical incidents and death, but they'll show up in any just big incident and help fund, or help feed everyone there in the meantime, just to try to provide whatever resources they can from their perspective. Another fundraising event we had, we held the Special Olympics Torch Run. That raised a little over $3,400 toward the Special Olympics. That goes directly to the athletes, so that's a specific funding source for them, so that's really good. Okay, so a little bit on the crime side. If you've been paying attention to social media, you might have seen the Loomis landscaping scam. So if you don't know, a man was using the fake name of Austin. He was basically just selling himself as a business and would take a deposit and then just never return. So we have successfully identified this person as David Hitchman, and we've arrested him. And since then, we've identified a handful of other victims, so if there are any other victims of this particular circumstance, please come, let us know, bring it to our attention so we can add them to the list, since this is an ongoing investigation, and I think.
Can you repeat his name? So Austin, was he, he was going by Austin?
He was using the name Austin.
Austin or Austin?
Austin.
Austin, okay.
A U-S-T-I-N.
Okay. And David Hitchman was his real name?
David Hitchman, he's 34 years old. It's actually, we actually released all his information on our social media, so, I mean, if you forget, you can look up Placer County social media, and we put it on blast and let everybody know exactly who this individual is and what he's been doing.
Okay, great.
So with that, can you switch your, your screen? So I'll have Jeff come up here, if Jeff can come on the way up.
Oh, yeah.
Here, I'll let him talk a little bit about this, but I'll.
Ringing bells like a major church, right?
Yeah. So for those that are unaware, Jeff has been competing in the law, in law enforcement and fire Olympics for a little over 20 years. And during that time, he's brought home a little over 100 medals, and just this year was invited to be inducted into the Police Olympic Hall of Fame. So that took place this year down in Southern California, where he again medaled and was invited to the World Olympics. So I don't want to steal Jeff's thunder, but he just got back from back east, competing in the World Olympics with over 63 countries competing, hundreds if not thousands of athletes. And, and what Jeff's doing is, what And, and what Jeff's doing is, what he has done is quite remarkable. It's actually kind of exciting just to know somebody at that caliber.
Yeah.
And some of the things Jeff may not mention is, I work, Jeff, Jeff works for me, and I work him to death. He is not just the Loomis traffic cop. He is basically my PR guy. He goes to all the events because I'm in charge of all public relation events. So Jeff really never gets a break. And then on top of that, he is competing at not just a competitive level, but at this, at this caliber is quite remarkable. The individuals, Jeff took bronze in, in the event, and the individual that won it was a, was an actual professional athlete.
Oh.
And the other individual came with an entire team. And Jeff came after work. So
He was robbed.
If you want to tell a little bit about your experience, we'd love to hear it.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Yeah, so I just handed out some of the medals that I've won this year. So brought home eight medals from San Diego, which was the United States version of the Olympics. So that's all the states within the United States gets to come and compete. It was in San Diego. And then while I was down there, they had the induction into the Hall of Fame, which is, is a big deal for me because I've been doing this over 20 years now, competing in tons of, like basically, you know, high school kid, I get out, I go to college, I get out, I want to be a police officer. I want to go help the community. Well, I still had that competitive spirit in me, right? And so I still wanted to go compete. And that was just, you know, my, just who I was, right? And so I began picking sports, you know, like, oh, I think this would be fun. I think that would be fun. And so I went through and did a ton of different sports. Played soccer, played, I was shooting, running, and just landed on the bicycling part, right? That was just something that, as I got older, it didn't beat up my body as much as running did. And so it's a passion that I took into my, you know, adulthood, parenthood, whatever, you know. So it was just, and I still do a lot of the other sports, but just cycling is the one that I'm competitive in, predominantly mountain biking. And so, you know, taking that into a department and telling the new people that are coming in, like, hey, get involved, get, go out and, and be healthy, and, you know, do something that you love outside of police work. It's healthy for, you know, us that, you know, see traumatic events and work very hard. You have outlets that you can, so I'm ambassador for that, essentially, is that pushing that onto, you know, our, our staff, that, that physical fitness is, is a, is a big part of, of the stress reliever for our, our job, right? And so I think that's what the founding fathers that, that kind of developed these games kind of had in mind. And so I took that, you know, and, and bring it back. And so it's something that I've been passionate about for a long time. So went to whirl, or got inducted into the Hall of Fame with, with six other people, a few, normally it's people that are retired. I was the only active law enforcement officer that was in, in the induction. All the rest were retired. One had already passed away, so his wife was there. So pretty special place, pretty, you know, cool people to, to be around and to, to, you know, be part of that, you know, written into the history books. With the amount of medals, it was, I don't even remember the amount, but it was, oh, oh, that's for, for the competition. But, but over the 20 years, right?
That was a lot.
And so I got invited to go to the World Police and Fire Olympics, which was in Birmingham, Alabama this year. And the only reason why I was truly able to go was that it was stateside. Normally, these all take place world. They, they, they are all over the map. They're in Australia two years ago. They were, they're every two years. They were in China. And so it costs a lot of money and a lot of time off of work to be able to travel with a bike over to another country. I saw that was stateside and took the opportunity. And the department completely supported me, which was fantastic. And then just some other supporters of this, our Law Enforcement Management Association, which is all management level for Placer County Sheriff's Office, supported me. The DSA, which is the, our, our deputies association, supported me. The Lions Club. It was cool. The community surrounded me. And it's, it's, I mean, it just makes it that much better, right? That, that the community of Loomis and, and around are completely supportive of, of us as law enforcement officials. American Legion support, Ace Hardware, High Hand Nursery, and Randy and Annette Green. They just like sent a check to the department. They heard about it through, and it was, you know, totally special. So, yeah, thank you. It was, you know, it's tough working full-time. All the kids in the room, parents will understand this. It's tough working and getting the motivation either before work or after work to go out and still keep your fitness, right? And especially hard when you've had a really tough day on your feet, you know, doing different things that law enforcement officials do. But keeping that going and keeping that competitive spirit going and, and, but, yeah, I hope you, I mean, there's just some pictures from Birmingham. It's all green there.
Wow.
It rains every night, you know, it's crazy. It was still warm, very humid, not conditions that we're used to here in California. But you could see like the water and sweat flying off me crossing the finish line there. But yeah, so representing the United States, I obviously had the USA team shirt. And then on the podium, that was Canada and Brazil were the other people on the podium there. Yep. Yeah, I mean, you're in good company. It's, it's super cool, like lining up to someone that's a, a police officer from Russia and a firefighter from Australia. You know, you're like, you know, what, and you talk to these, it's, it's super cool. I mean, I'm doing a poor job of explaining this, but, but, yeah, I just wanted to bring back my experiences. That's why I was gone for a week. But the support of the community, support of the sheriff's office and everyone, that's, I mean, it's, it's awesome. So, yeah, any questions at all that anyone has?
We've always known you were great, right here. It's just nice to get national and international recognition for that. But also being an ambassador for Placer County and just going out and saying, but this is what we're like from, from where I am. And it's just, thank you for doing that.
And it's a role model, right? Role model from not only my two boys, right? You know, they're old enough to remember this stuff. They went with me and my wife. But, you know, role model for the community, role model for, I mean, all the kids in this room, sitting here now, you know, I didn't, I didn't know they were going to be here. But like, to, to, you know, someone, one of them may be sitting in the room now, you know, like, well, I want to do that. And my, like, my kids come back and go like, well, I still want to do that in my job. I want to have a job where I'm able to go still do, do, do things like that. So anyways.
Can I embarrass you one more time? So you probably know where I'm going with this. So he's also been nominated for the Congressional Honor, Honor Roll. Kevin Kiley's office has nominated him, and he's going to be honored next month. Sorry.
I didn't know that. That's fantastic.
You did know about that.
Oh, wait, you did tell me. Yes.
He was nominated, but he was selected. So I guess Congress had a mention of him on television as well. They're, you know, C-SPAN, I guess. So you're on C-SPAN.
You got to give me this stuff. It's cool.
I mean, you weren't personally there, but they mentioned you in DC. So there you go.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Right? They match. You want to wear your Mr. T starter kit with that?
Next, we have the Fire District. It tells about all the Olympics that you've won.
Yeah, come on, Chief. Do some push-ups or something.
Boy. Well, welcome. Thank you all. Always a privilege to be here. Talk a little bit about June. I feel very, I mean, kudos to Jeff. That's fantastic, man. Guy knocks out of the park. Anyway.
We love you too.
June 2025. Thank you very much. Here's our staff, our heat map, right here. It was the hottest spot in the town of Loomis. Some vehicle accidents and some fires and what have you. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. 343 calls, most of them fires or emergency medical in nature. Next slide, please. Tracking right along with what we did last year, except calls are down a little bit for the month of June. That's where the lines differ. But overall, we're up about 2% to 3% year over year. Next slide, please. Response time, 8:41. In the summer, it gets a little longer. We're looking for fires. We're trying to find where stuff's at. So our response times kind of grow in the, in the summertime when it gets a little harder to get access to stuff. So that's what we see here overall. We're still shooting for eight minutes, but it's, it's a bit of a range. I will talk briefly right now about, we had that fire over behind Rayleigh's two days ago, and we had another one today. The one two days ago, we're attributing it to the most likely culprit being fireworks of some shape or variety. And today's probably a rekindle, something just sat in the duff and festered over the last two days and finally got hot enough to burn today. For our Fourth of July calls, typically we see, I think in the last few years, we've done somewhere between 20 and 25 responses to people reporting fireworks. This year it was eight, so that's a good thing. I think the signs, the digital media, all of that stuff is helping to reinforce to people that all fireworks in unincorporated Placer County are illegal. Kind of hard when you can drive down the street and go pick them up in some of our neighboring towns, but we try and educate the best we can. Next slide, please. We have a board meeting coming up this next Tuesday, if you want to attend. But more importantly, and to hit on something the sheriff's office and Chris was talking about, it's summertime, it's water safety. We all want to get cooled off. We all want to have a great time. If you've got kids, please pay attention, especially the smaller ones. They'll slide into the water. Nobody will hear them, and they'll drown. And that's a very difficult thing. This year, we've had a number of incidents where we've had drownings, whether it's in the lake and pools and what have you. It seems to be going up, so please watch over them. Again, to their point, we haven't really ever recovered somebody in a life jacket before, so they work, wear them. I don't care if you're two or 200. If you're out on the water, please, please, please wear them. And if you think that if you're in a boat and you can put it on before it goes down, you're wrong, because you can't. You either fly out of the boat, you get hit in the head, the boat goes over so fast, and then you hit that cold water, and it's tragedy, and that can be prevented by throwing on that life jacket. If you don't like the way the big orange one looks, buy some little, you know,
Snazzier.
Yeah, Snazzier. And then if you have a pool or hot tub or something that has electricity that's wired to a pool light, plug it in your spa. I have that checked every once in a while for electric stuff. Something that came up, not necessarily here in California, but back east, there's been some incidents of stuff shorting out in the water. So always a good opportunity to take a look and see and make sure your stuff is, is good. Just go take a look at the wires and make sure that stuff's going on. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have. I didn't win any medals. I know you were going to ask, but that's okay.
Do you have any questions? Oh, go for it.
Thank you, Chief. I just had a comment to add to what you were talking about. You've never rescued a child with a life jacket on. And just a real quick experience I had at Folsom Lake. I was out there exercising my dog, and there was a disturbance in the water, a frantic lady, and she was concerned about her child. Now, she had a life jacket on, but her child didn't. I ended up rescuing him, and I brought him up to the surface, but he was down eight or nine minutes.
Oh, geez.
I swam him in the shore. By that time, my buddy who I was with had the mindset to call 911. So the, the Rangers showed up, and then EMS showed up thereafter. And when I handed him off to the lifeguards, when I hit the shore, they started performing CPR and whatnot. And he was a 10-year-old boy dressed in a shirt much like this and pants. And what I found out later through the investigation was that he was, I believe, is an autistic child. And there was a miscommunication among the family members on the beach. They, one person thought another person was watching him, while that other person thought the other person was watching him, because he was not dressed for the water. And, and so he was supposed to be beachside. What had happened was he saw my dog, my, my dogs are impeccably trained, and they're just spectacular to watch. And he was so attracted by their performance in the water that he decided to go out there unbeknownst to his family members, and that's how it happened. So it's a tragedy. So even if you're, you mentioned about being on a boat and not wearing a life jacket. You could even be on a beach and not have the correct management for a situation like that, and tragedy can still happen. So just wanted to add that. It doesn't have to always be on a boat. It could be beachside.
Absolutely. And if you're not, again, it's as simple as, hey, you know, who's watching the kid? I thought you were. I thought I was. And all of a sudden, it's, it's horrible. It's sad. It's life wrecking. And so all for something that's fairly simple, whether it's on the beach, on a boat, at your own pool, at your friend's pool. So that's, just trying to reinforce the point, and thank you for the, for the, you know, really hitting home with that. So, sorry to leave on such a down note, but
I know, I'm like
Thank, thank you for all of your
Thank you all.
Chief.
All right. Moving on now to the UC Master Gardeners. Do we have anybody that they're not here? Okay. All right. Next up is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the council on subjects that are not already on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed three minutes of time. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on any non-agenda items. However, we may refer your concerns to staff or ask that an item be placed on a future agenda. So does anybody in the public have any comments they want to make for items not on the agenda?
Good evening. My name is Randy Green, and if you didn't recognize me, I was actually Eddie the Eagle during the parade.
I recognized you.
This is our commander from the American Legion Post, Doug Waters, and you know Russ. First off, we're on behalf of the American Legion Post 775, and also the Veterans of Foreign War of 904. We'd like to thank you for participating in the Loomis first-ever downtown parade. You were a big part of our parade success, why you led our parade. So we really appreciate that. We'd like to also thank your staff for tremendous help in assisting us in putting this parade together. It was estimated that we had over 1,000 people during the parade. So this was amazing, the number that was out on our first parade. We received amazing positive feedback, not only from the community, but also from the town merchants. I know that Smithville was busy, the mug was busy. We're going to try to get tailors open, because some people say, I want my ice cream even in the morning. So we're hoping that you join us next year. It's going to be our country's 250th anniversary. So we're hoping that you could join us again. And we know we're going to be bigger and also brighter for our community. So I want to thank you all very much.
Thank you guys for doing that.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Does anybody else have any comments they would like to make for items not on the agenda? Do we have anybody online?
Wow.
All right. Close public comment, then. That's, that now is the opportunity to comment on the consent calendar, the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion unless an audience member or a council member requests otherwise. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? No?
Okay, no?
I'm going to pull item five, please. So that's the resolution for the tax records.
Okay.
Everybody else is okay with that? Okay. Does anybody in the audience have any items they want to pull from the consent calendar? No? Anybody online? Nope. All right. So can I get?
I move to approve items one through four and six through eight. I second.
All right. So we have items one through four and six through eight for motion for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those pass. So motion, or item five is the transaction, transaction as use tax for the rec, for the tax records. Could you just give us a quick comment on how much that would cost?
Yeah, I'll take, I'll, I'll take that, Mr. Mayor. The cost is $900 a quarter or $3,600 a year.
Okay, and is that every year? That we have to do that, or is it just this year?
That's this year. There'll be like a CPI adjustment.
And can, is there, can you just give a quick comment as to why they can't just do this based on the information they already know?
Because the sales tax and the transactions tax are different.
Okay.
And the way you can tell that is that if they were the same, the transaction use tax would be exactly one quarter of the sales tax, and it's not.
Okay.
There are some things in the transactions and use tax that are not included in the sales tax, and I think it's a good idea for staff to know what they are.
Okay. So I, I read through this, and I was like, it should just be a quick Excel calculation, and it's not that quick, is what you're saying. Okay.
No.
Sounds good to me. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
No.
No?
I'll make a motion to approve item five on the consent.
I'll make a motion to approve item five on the consent.
Okay.
I'll second.
And a second?
Managl.
All in, so that was a motion to approve item five. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Excellent. Thank you, Ted. All right, now we're moving on to business. First, we have the Del Oro Tennis Court funding request. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the April council meeting, Paul Frank came and asked council to consider contributing to the maintenance of the Del Oro tennis courts. At that time, council directed the item to be placed on the agenda for future discussion. If council wishes to consider a donation to the tennis courts improvements, it would be appropriate for it to come from the unrestricted general fund reserves. In the balance that we're gonna have after the two-year budget adoption, so at the end of 2027, we'll have $567,132 that you folks will be able to allocate funding from if you choose. So I believe there's, looks like plenty of representatives here from the organization. I'm sure somebody was glad to get up and speak on their behalf.
All right. Before we do that, does anybody on the council have any questions about this? Any comments they want to make?
I have comments, but I'll definitely wait for them.
Wait for public comment. Okay. All right, let's open this up for public comment, then. Anybody?
Well, don't they have a presentation?
Is there a presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Paul Frank, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Loomis community to request funding for resurfacing the public courts at Del Oro High School. For those of you at the dais, raise your hand if you've ever played tennis at the Del Oro tennis courts.
Very long time ago.
Or pickleball. For the rest of you, we're gonna get you out there soon. For those of you in the audience, stand up or raise your hand if you've ever played or watched tennis at the Del Oro tennis court.
Woohoo!
All right.
Wow.
So the courts are very popular, and not just for Loomis residents, but in the general vicinity as well. Did you know that 70% of all tennis is played at public facilities? Now, you could pay to play at Auburn Racket Club, or Johnson Ranch, or Lifetime Fitness, but the six community tennis courts at Del Oro High School are the only public courts from Johnson Springview Park in Rockland all the way up to North Auburn. They are heavily used and a significant asset to the town, serving Loomis residents with a fun, healthy, and lifelong sport. The courts also provide a significant economic impact for the town. When tournaments and other events, think weddings, movie nights, other activities that can be held on a tennis court, these provide a source of revenue for the shops and restaurants in Loomis. When I was driving here tonight, just in my head, I was doing some math, and I think over six years of being involved in tennis here in Loomis and using the tennis courts, our family has probably spent at least $10,000 in the town. And that's just one family. Multiply that by 10, by 20, 30 families, and you're already recouping your investment in just a year or two. So it brings in a lot of money for ice cream, for coffee, for gas, for groceries, for plants, for dinner, for lunch. A lot of the businesses in town really do benefit. And if marketed, if promoted more for tournaments and things like that, having appropriate tennis court surfaces, of course, then that's a great economic impact for the town of Loomis. Furthermore, studies have shown that nearby tennis courts can increase property values, benefiting homeowners and the local tax base. According to tennis court professionals, public courts should be resurfaced every four to seven years. The Del Oro Community Courts were last refurbished in 2018, and the condition of the courts reflect this. The significant cracks in the courts are becoming a hazard, a detriment to play, and honestly, an embarrassment when teams from other communities play here. The last time these community courts were refurbished, the town of Loomis generously contributed $50,000 from the reserve and general funds. Tonight, the Loomis community is requesting council approve $50,000 to $60,000 for the resurfacing of these courts. That's a little bit more than, well, $50,000 would be the same amount that you funded last time, about eight years ago, seven years ago. We are also continually doing fundraising. The players, the boys' teams and the girls' teams, they get on the phones, they knock on doors, they go to local businesses, raising money. And so that's a big part of what we've already been able to gain in terms of the cost. American Legion, Chamber of Commerce, law enforcement organizations, and many of you who know people who own businesses, if they want to contribute to the resurfacing of Del Oro tennis courts, that provides marketing and signage opportunities for folks as well. So that's ongoing year over year. We're always trying to raise more money in those ways as well. The investment that you make in the Del Oro Public Tennis Courts is really every eight or nine years for the resurfacing. You don't have to pay for electricity for the lights, you don't have to pay for the parking resurfacing, you don't have to pay for landscaping. The day-to-day maintenance, the annual maintenance that's done, is done by players, it's done by parents, it's done by coaches. And so we're asking at this time to do what you did seven or eight years ago and help contribute to the economic development, the health of our young people, the public safety. It gives young people something to do, not just during the day, but also at night with the lights. And so there's a variety of reasons for you to say yes, and I can't think of one for you to say no. I do want to bring up one of our community members, Jen Isaac. She's a Del Oro Boys and Girls Varsity Tennis Coach, and she's gonna talk a little bit about the condition of the courts and the process of getting them resurfaced. And then also, if some of our team captains, Bracken and Reina can come up and talk as well, and if a parent wants to come up and give their kind of family point of view regarding the necessity of these courts, that'd be great. So first, Jen?
Hello, everyone. I'm Jen Isaac. I've been coaching at Del Oro for about 20 years, both the boys' and girls' tennis teams. And like we came up eight years ago to ask for money and to say thank you, I'm hoping I get to say thank you again today after talking with you. I run a no, we run a no-cut program at the tennis, at Del Oro, meaning that anybody can play. And right now, I'm talking to my coaches, and we have 60 girls already signed up for this fall. And we try on six courts, and you can get a max of four players on a court. So you can imagine all the extra time and love and effort that the tennis community and the tennis family puts into these players that come in year after year. For the boys' tennis team, we have generally around 30 to 40 guys that are interested in playing tennis also. My husband and I moved here about seven or eight years ago. We love it here. The kids are great. I know that if we're able to continue having the facility at the level that it deserves, that we'll be able to do this for a long time. And so I wanted to bring up some of these great people so that you could listen to the reason why. They're passionate about these tennis courts, too.
Hi, everybody. I'm Reina Banks. Thanks, Coach, for introducing us. I just wanted to come over here and talk to you guys a little bit about why I think it's so important to have the facilities refurbished. I know that, speaking for a lot of us growing up playing on the tennis courts, it's really important to have the facilities up to speed because a lot of us here, we don't have memberships at the gyms with the good quality tennis courts. And it's nice to have ones that we can be proud of, and that, like Mr. Frank said, that when other schools come to visit us, that we can be proud of. And we do a lot of fundraising, and it's really important, but obviously, we could always use some help. So I just think it's really important for, moving forward, for us to be able to have courts that are not only usable, but also presentable. And just thank you so much for hearing us for that today. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jayman, and the courts are important to me, not just like for me personally, but just for like the like local kids in the community. For the past, I don't know, like 20 years, the Isaacs have done like a kid's summer camp. And I recently joined tennis my sophomore year, and I've been able to help out in those camps. And it's just, just being able to see those kids' faces, just like them having just a great time, you know. We're not just teaching about tennis, we're just, we're teaching about like life in general, and just the life lessons they can learn that, not just on the tennis court, but they can also take out, you know, when they go to high school. And, you know, maybe not all the kids, you know, love, you know, tennis like that, but just being able for them to have like a social aspect, you know, make new friends. And for me personally, just being able to meet the new like freshmen coming in and being able to know like who they are. And overall, it's just, it's been a great experience, just being able to help out of the camps and see the kids, you know, improve a lot, you know. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Bracken Zerwass. I am a varsity tennis captain on the boys' team at Del Oro. Four years ago, I joined, I joined tennis my freshman year, and since then, I've played many hours of tennis on those courts. I rarely play tennis elsewhere. The only time really is when we have away games at other, other schools' courts. I've met many new people, many new close friends, mentors, and coaches, and all that happens on those courts. So I think the importance of those courts is not just in playing tennis, but in building community and helping grow our tennis program that has multiple positive outcomes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Avery Phillips. I'm gonna be a senior at Del Oro this year. I've been playing tennis probably for as long as I can remember, probably since I came out of the womb. But I have been going into Del Oro tennis camps and just being on the Del Oro tennis courts since we moved here. And I even remember when they were red and green, so that was something. And it was great to have them redone the first time. And I think those courts probably get used every day of the year. I mean, especially in the summer. I was just out there today. I mean, I took out my grandma to play pickleball the other day. It's really fun. And it's not just a place for the Del Oro tennis teams, which I think there's two varsity teams, both like, there's a men's team and a women's team, and then there's JV team for each. And then a bunch of kids, and also just town members, I see them out there all the time, whether it's hitting against the ball wall or playing against each other. It's just a great community, which is what some of my other fellow captains said. And I think it's just really important to, you know, honor that and refurbish these courts since, after a few years, you can definitely see the cracks starting to come in and some worn-out places. But it's still a great place to be, and it's kind of like a second home for a lot of people. And I found a lot of cool new relationships getting to play here, and just really enjoy spending many, many hours on these courts that I will miss in these next few years going off to college. But I hope that we can redo them for these future students coming in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm not representing the tennis team. Am I okay to talk? I'm just a resident here?
Can we, we open up for public comment? I think the presentation...
Yeah, I would just make...
We need to, yeah, let's finish up, let's finish that up, maybe ask some questions, and then we'll bring the public up after that, okay?
Okay.
Hold on to it.
So I think a lot of the comments that you heard were about community, right? And the tennis courts are really a partnership between the town of Loomis and Del Oro High School. And I'm hoping that a lot of, not just the players, but other young people that use the courts that live in Loomis, go off to college, like she mentioned, come back because they want to continue to play tennis here, and they know the surface will be, will be in proper order for them. You know, a lot of communities, Granite Bay, Roseville, Rockland, a lot of those players, they go to, they go to private tennis clubs, they have private coaches, and we still kick their ass. We had, we had Boden Willis, who won sections. He won league four years in a row. And he was representing Loomis when he was doing that. And so it's something that you can all be very proud of. Some of the details in terms of the resurfacing, the lowest bid we have so far is $99,000, which is less than we spent eight years, or seven or eight years ago, primarily just because back then it was really a refurbishing. This time, it's strictly a resurfacing. The cracks are, I think, more significant than some of the players probably recognize. And because of weather, because of usage, those cracks, cracks really do become more significant much quicker. And so it's, it's necessary for maintenance, just not to allow it to keep going. It's really important for that. Otherwise, the price goes up.
As a clarification, did you say 99?
$99,000 is the lowest bid. The original bid from this organization was 107, and then we made a phone call, 107,000, made a phone call and said, "Hey, can you get that down a little bit?" And so they're generous enough to get it to 99,000. But again, as time goes by, the price continues to go up. If there are, you know, asphalt companies and things like that, that can do things pro bono for the refurbishing of the courts, that'd be great, too. We're open to that. And again, not just the funding from the council, but all of you with, with your connections and, and the folks that you know, if you can also help to, you know, make a phone call here and there and, and get us a couple thousand dollars if you can. That's also very helpful.
Can I have two minutes or a couple of shorts?
Are you part of, are you part of...
How about your public comment? So I'll finish my comment.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions.
I just have a couple of questions, yeah. How much have you gotten in contribution so far?
So we've raised $15,000, the student staff.
Okay.
We expect to get some funding from the district and from the county. And if anyone knows anybody at Costco, you know, we'd be, you know, again, any of the service organizations, the law enforcement organizations, if they want to throw in 500,000, there's a lot of opportunities for signage and marketing for that. So the school and the school community looking at getting half of it, you know, from a variety of sources, and then the town, really kind of the other half of it.
And you said you, you're going to reach out to Placer County, or you have, you already done so?
We've talked to them, and to be honest, a lot of the, so they contributed last time. And a lot of the other donors are looking at kind of what the town's gonna do, and kind of waiting on that. And then, so, once that money is hopefully approved tonight, then I expect that it'll, they'll be more certain that it's gonna happen.
Okay.
I have a question before we make other comments, but what are you getting from the school district? Have they committed to an amount?
They haven't committed. And so, last time, we got 20,000 from the school district.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And I would expect at least that amount this time.
Sir, you may not know the answer to this, and, because I certainly don't, but you might, though. There was a voter-initiated bond that Measure passed years ago for Del Oro. Was any portion of that for the tennis courts? Or, and my second follow-up question is, to your knowledge, is there any, are there any funds left over from that bond that could be applied to the tennis courts? I just don't, so much time has gone by, I don't remember.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have any knowledge of that. I'm pretty sure that it wasn't for tennis courts, though. That that's not what the law...
I think it was about the swimming pool, was it not? Does that make sense?
The last bond measure, I think, was on the buildings. Yeah. It was on the, replacing the... Yeah, I don't think it had sports.
Okay.
Did you have any?
All right, thank you so much for...
You said one more person from the, are you done with your presentation?
I'm done with my presentation.
Okay, all right.
And thank you very much for hearing us and the, and the rest of the community down there.
Okay, let's open this up for public comment, then. And before I do that, I want to say to everybody who came up and talked already, I know it is very difficult coming up to this podium and talking to us. It's stressful, it's, you get very nervous doing it, but congratulations for doing that already. So, and thank you for your input. But does anybody else have any public comment that they would like to add, then?
All right. So I'm just here as like a community member and a tennis junkie. So I come from a long family of tennis players. I have an 83-year-old dad and an 80, sorry, 83-year-old mom and an 82-year-old dad. They still play about three times a week. Play with her dad right over there, a super-long friendship. I have two brothers who are Division One National Coaches of the Year. And next month, I'll be celebrating with my teammates from our national championship 20 years ago. So tennis is in my family's blood. It's a wonderful sport, and I want to talk to you guys about how important it is to your community. Yes?
Thank you, Trey.
Justin Coop, C-O-U-P-E. You have a fantastic facility. I've played at courts all across the country, from Maine to Florida. That is a fantastic public facility. It's laid out really well. Whoever first did it had tons of room on the baseline, you have shade structures. It is really, really nice. Just like you have, we have two beautiful parks to play baseball at. It's a really nice facility. It does need some love and care. It does need to be all the maintenance that they're talking about. You have to do it to tennis courts all the time, and, and that facility needs it. I go out there with my 11-year-old daughter. When we're out there, we are never alone. It's played by everybody. It's played by little kids, it's played by girls, it's played by boys, it's played by people my parents' age and kids as young as five or six years old. We go out there three to five times a week, normally around 7, 8 o'clock. We're never alone. There's always people out there. There's always, there's, there's tons of high school kids out there, like, not just on the tennis team, there's other kids that are just out there. They're always respectful, don't ever see any of that disrespect or anything else like that. In 2018, the Mayo Clinic put out a wonderful study about racket sports. And what they found was that tennis players, people who played tennis, on average, lived for 9.7 years longer than the average person.
Wow.
And at first, they said, "Well, it's a country cup sport. They're wealthy. They, you know, they have good healthcare." And so, then they dug deeper, and they said, "No, we're comparing them against people in the same socioeconomic pattern." And they're like, "Well, it's aerobics. They're, they're out getting exercise." Like, no, they, they live longer than runners, they live longer than basketball players, they, they live longer than everybody.
Wow.
So they kept digging, and they found two things. One is... One is that racket sports, when practiced at an aerobic level, like tennis where you're running around, that it stimulates the brain in a way that's very healthy and very difficult to mimic otherwise. The other thing that they found out was that tennis, with its wonderful, unique format, where you have to sit next to somebody in between changeovers about every three minutes, you form friendships and you form community. And these are really important. What they found was that those friendships were super-healthy and super-important later in life, like her father and my father, who still play in their 80s. And so it is great for the kids, and I'm all for the kids, and I love that tennis team. But it's also really good for the community as a whole. And I want you all to realize how nice of a facility for the public that is, because it is truly a really nice facility. And Lifetime, just down the way, they're hundreds of thousands of dollars. They lay out their courts all wrong, and it's not nearly as nice as your public facility. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I just want to... So, just before you start, with the applause, there was something that you had said one time.
Yes.
We, when we applaud for things like shareability, that's totally appropriate, but when you applaud for public comment, what it really does is it puts a damper on dissenting opinions. And so we try, we try not to do that, okay? So please, if you could refrain your applause. Did I get it right?
You did.
All right. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Chris Wysocki. And I just want to, first of all, as a parent of a young lady who plays tennis for Del Aro right now, I want to thank Paul and Jennifer for all their hard work on this. And I'll just say, we've been in the area for about 15 years, and one of the reasons that we moved here was the school district. And when we moved in, it became very clear to us that this is a community that cares about its lifestyle. And I think that your investment in the Del Aro team and the Del Aro campus is to be commended. I think the fact that you've been able to build a $567,000 reserve in your budget is fantastic, given the state of the state's economy and the state budget. To have a surplus like that is something that most cities in the state would just be thrilled with. But like I think Paul mentioned, that surplus exists because people actually use the town and they use the resources that you have built as a community. The Del Aro tennis courts are an integral part. You know, Paul said very clearly, he thinks he spent probably about $10,000. Well, the multiplier effect on that in the community is huge. And if we're able to continue our quality of life, our lifestyle, the number of students that are here is just fantastic. This is a community asset that gives back to the community. And I think asking for a fairly modest investment to make sure the infrastructure is in place to continue providing that service to the community is worthwhile of this council's attention. So, Chris Wysocki, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
My name's Tom Isaac. I'm one of the coaches at Del Aro High School. And Justin, these kids that you meet out there didn't just happen to show up and have those kind of attitudes. Sir, can you come out here for me? Every single kid that we come in contact to is taught to do the, drop, give me a push-up, will you? When we ask them to do one, they do more than one. Nice shoes. Nice hairdo. Every kid goes through this program. So we influence your community, so they turn out like this, and that's not by accident. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. That's why I came to Tom.
Anybody else have any comments they want to make? Yeah.
Hi, my name is Sarah Gilmore, and I have kids at Del Aro. Right now, I've got Eva back there. Hi, Eva. Who's in the tennis program, and she started before she came to Del Aro High School. So you're bringing in families from the neighboring, things like, we're from Newcastle. And it was just a wonderful introduction to like the best you can do with your community. It's not just about sports and physical fitness and push-ups, but it's also about heart and inclusion. And tennis is for everyone and the coaches and the community. I get my daughter out there, not just with all of her friends, but also my 78-year-old mom comes out and throws balls at her because she's too afraid to play tennis. They do that early in the morning, but people are there until way past dark at night. It's such a resource, it's such an investment. And then I'm going to take off my mom hat and put on my school board hat. I am with the school board at Newcastle, and so I'm very aware of Measure D, which, to answer your question, there was no funds for sports in Measure D. Measure D was all about classrooms, safety, and your usual water and electricity and roof improvements, that kind of stuff. So there wasn't any funding, and schools are going to have a tough time funding stuff this year. We're facing pretty big uncertainty and a lot of pressure. So anything that the town can give towards this is going to be so helpful. I wouldn't expect the school to have nearly as much as last time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else present in the room that wants to make a comment? See any, anybody online who wants to make a comment?
What's his name, Miguel?
Tim.
Okay. Go ahead, Tim.
Hi, Tim Onderko, calling in support. I agree with a lot of the messages that have been conveyed tonight. Thank you for everybody who are showing up. You know, the tennis courts are an incredible community asset, not only for kids who play in school, but for people of all ages. And so it's really important to reinvest in the community. You know, the town is, in my opinion, kind of light on its, on what it has contributed as far as park space to the community. We have two parks in town, and so it's important to invest in what we have. There's a saying that has been populated in Loomis frequently, and that is, the schools are our park and rec departments. And so, you know, the town is, if we're not investing in new parks on our own, it's important to invest in what we have. And this is kind of an inexpensive way to invest in what is already there without having to create our own space, which is very costly, obviously. So those are my comments. Thank you for your consideration, and good night.
Thanks, Tim. Anybody else? I thought I saw somebody else with their hand up, but I guess...
Yeah, Miguel.
Miguel keeps putting his hand up and down.
Go ahead, Miguel.
Thank you. Miguel Uchivich, 5911, great court. My only question is, do these courts need to be totally rebuilt? In other words, bringing in another inch or two of asphalt? That was done just six years ago. And I looked at them, and normally what you do at this time, you put in a slurry coat that fills up the little cracks and everything. And so what I would recommend is having a tennis court construction company come out and evaluate whether or not you need to totally rebuild those courts. I had experience in rebuilding courts, and normally a rebuild like you did six years ago, last 15, 20 years, yeah, you'll get some small cracks in it. But normally what you do is go back with a slurry seal, fill those cracks up. You don't need to totally rebuild those courts. So I question whether or not you need to spend 90, whatever, $1,000 to totally rebuild those courts. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Miguel. Anybody else online?
Can we have Paul? Can we have Paul answer that question?
Yeah, can we have Paul answer that question, please?
I was going to close it, but yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Yes, can you answer that, please?
Yeah, okay. Can we...
So we've had three companies come out to give estimates, and as I mentioned, 99,000 was the lowest estimate. And it's not a complete refurbishing, it's not a couple of inches. It would be primarily slurry seal, painting of the stripes, well, the entire courts. And yeah, so it's less, that's what the professionals recommend. And Mr. Uchivich would like to, oh, that'd be great, but we've had three estimates already.
Okay. I'm not sure if you heard that, Miguel, but it sounds like it's just, it is just a resurface. It's not a total rebuild, it is a resurface.
It is a slurry seal and the repainting.
Okay. I see no more public comment online. I see no more here. So with that, we're going to close public comment. Does anybody want to start?
I do.
Okay.
Well, first of all, Mr. Onderko, per usual, you come in and take words out of my mouth, so thank you very much. But one of the things that I had written down, and a lot of you guys covered it, but it was the very point that I was making when we were adopting our general plan regarding the school district for Loomis. I am about building community, and I think it's very important that we do that. We also had a parent or coach from Del Aro that came in a few months ago and did an entire presentation about technology. Do you remember that? And this, to me, is another way to get our kids off of technology, to get them engaged, to get them out in the environment, and to build real relationships, right? And not just over social media. The parks, that's one of the points that I was going to make that Tim had already made, that we are already lacking. We are supposed to have, for every 100, no, I'm sorry, for every 1,000 residents, we are supposed to have a park, which is something that I had talked about prior, about getting a committee together to identify open parks and spaces. But since we do not have those, our schools are those for this community. So I think it's very important. Coach Isaac, you had told me when I came out to visit the tennis courts that you also run a program for disabled children. Is that correct?
Cerebral palsy.
Yes.
Good. Arm special, you name it.
Right. So it serves more, more things. It's several, several different birds with one stone. I think that Del Aro sports in general are an envy to our region. I've had three kids go through different sports at Del Aro and graduate, and they were always proud to be a screaming eagle. And we are, this, Del Aro sports has created major community, and I think that we need to rally around them. Also, it has been a precedent of this council that they have done it with the pool, they did it with the tennis courts before, and I don't think that we should stop now. The only thing that I would ask, from, how many of you guys are going to be seniors next year or this coming fall? Yeah? How many of you can I get to promise that you're going to talk to your other friends to not do that in our intersection again? Yeah? Because I want to support you, but we have to spend money on fixing that. And it's not a good look for our town. We're better than that. We're better than that. And I believe that you kids are better than that. You guys are amazing, amazing young people, and I would love to support this. I guess it would be up to the rest, I'm only one, but I would, I would love to.
All right, I, go ahead.
Janice, you want to get the...
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, I have some competitive tennis players in the family. They try teaching me, and I approached it like Happy Gilmore, if you've ever seen that movie. So that's the reason why I'm not a tennis player. I'm just not made for it. I'm a bull in the china shop. But I can recognize how the quality of play is affected by the condition of the courts. And you might find that you have a skill level that's higher than the court you're playing on. And so that disparity is disheartening, especially when you have spent hours training and working on your technique, and yet the court, whether it be the adhesion on the surface or the stripes being faded, you know, don't complement your play. We are in a position now, due to the most recent councils, their leadership and their foresight with economic development, that we do have some money in our budget, and that hasn't been the case. This town has suffered from poor leadership for many years, decades ago. And so without developing a tax base, and I commend Mr. Onderko, because he brought this up in a private conversation before about not developing a tax base against the advice of SACOG, which is the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. When the town incorporated in 1984, SACOG had advised the council at the time to develop a tax base because you're going to need the money as a community. As a community grows and develops, you're going to need the money. So you can't rest on your laurels of your new incorporation. You have to act proactively. Councils from that time forward were not doing that. There was a resistance to that. The resistance was the thought that we don't want to be Rockland, we don't want to be Lincoln. Well, that was never the option. Loomis can never be Rockland, can never be Lincoln. We are seven square miles, all right? Deputy Billado could jog around our perimeter as a warm-up for his, for his competitions. That's how small we are. So I dismiss the notion that we could ever be Rockland or Lincoln. But like I say, what we could have done in the past was, we could have, if we had the effective leadership, we could have been smart and been selective about our economic development and therefore not be in the position all those years of not having funds. Let's wrap this up. That has changed. These, the past councils of recent have changed. It's a new dynamic here, and we now have some money, which is the good news. So please, in the future, when it comes time to select your leaders, understand who you're voting for. I mean, ask some questions, because it takes not just single-issue leadership. It takes, it's a holistic approach to governance, and it's not, it's not easy, but it's doable. So please be selective. Now, my position on this, to get to the point, is I believe that it is a worthy cause to support. And because we don't have parks, as was mentioned by Evanda, the schools are our parks. I had the opportunity to work over at Del Aro for one day. I did an eight-hour shift over there, and I witnessed the traffic on those tennis courts from 7:00 in the morning till 3:30 in the afternoon. And what I witnessed was a congested parking lot, and every court used. And sometimes people were playing doubles just because that's what it took to get into a game. There was some organization going on there, had to have been, because there was never a dead court or an empty court. It was, people were respectful, they were rotating out. And like I say, I was doing my work, but I got to witness for eight hours, like I say, the constant usage and the high traffic of those courts. So I don't know what the council can, would support as far as an amount, but, and that's for us to discuss, but I am of the position that since these courts are so heavily trafficked and it is a public use, that I would be supportive of some money. I don't know how much yet, we have to discuss that, going to this effort.
I'm going to go next, because I'm going to be the bad guy. I think that if this was money that could come out of the park fund, this would be an easy decision, because we have lots of money in our park fund that is specifically for parks. The problem is, this is not a park, this is a school, and so we can't use that money for this. This is coming from our general fund. And we have had more in the past. This 500,000 is actually a low amount for our general fund reserves. And to me, 50,000 is a large, that's a large chunk of what our reserves are. I could be convinced to have something, but 50,000, to me, I think is too, too big. I do like your point, Councilman Cortez, about the intersection. There is, we have been a really good partner with the schools. The students are great, and I love them. How can we convince the students to not graffiti our intersection again? If this, if this is a way, I'm for it. But I don't, I, I don't know, that's a hard, that the five of you that are seniors that are here, you can't convince everybody else not to do it.
That's right.
It's hard to, at the council, it's hard to, for all of you to show up, it's totally unfair, for all of you to show up and then ask us for this, because it's, it's very convincing. But I also have people who don't show up and say, hey, my road is full of potholes. Is this the money? Are you, you're going to spend $50,000 on tennis courts, resurfacing tennis courts when I can't even drive down my road? And that, to me, is... And that, to me, is the decision, is a decision that we have to make here, and so, 50,000, again, to me, is, is a, is a high number. Um, I was out there this weekend, and I did notice that Placer County has a nice sign that says, "Placer County gave us all this money," and if Loomis gave you 50,000 last time, which covered it, I didn't see any signs that said, "Loomis gave us money." Um, that may be there, I just missed it, but, not that I need recognition, not that I need recognition, but it's, it's ni, it would be nice, right? Um, and then the last little bit is with the pickleball courts. How, is it, can you repaint pickleball, like, can you play pickleball on tennis courts and it's the same? Like, you have, you have to lower than that, I thought, and the lines are slightly different. If they were, I can see it as, pickleball is huge, becoming huge. Tennis is already huge in the town. Pickleball is becoming huge. Is it, is there a way to re-add lines for those in there? I mean, if there is, then that's great, because then you're bringing a lot more of the community in. You all hate me now. I see it. I can see it in your eyes. Uh, but I'm only one of five, right? And so, uh, I, I, I just wanna say that, I, I want you to be aware that this is a lot of money for the town to be giving you, and if we do go with the full 50,000, that is a, a good chunk of money. I, I don't want you to, you know, just be gro- you're so thankful that you, I, I don't want, that's not what I'm looking for. I just want you to understand that you're, we would be taking away money from other uses to do this, and is, is this worth it? I'm not 100% there, but I just want you to know that this is my thought process. Anybody else?
Wow, okay. Yeah, I mean, yeah. Um, so, I'm Jan. I am class of 81, Deloro. I'm proud Golden Eagle. My daughter went to Deloro, um, I, you know, obviously I grew up in this town. Um, I know how important those tennis courts are, um, and how important the team is, and how important it is to the community. Um, you know, my family, we're from a, we have, we have a golf course in town, and, um, and that, you know, I can see how, uh, sports and community go hand in hand. Um, and so, I, you know, totally, totally support the idea of, of, of having some funds able to, to give you for this project. Um, you know, but as Mayor Ring said, um, there are people asking us, too, for money for roads as well. Um, I had two, two requests over the last three days. Um, but, with that said, I, you know, I'm totally supportive of, of, of donating something, and, you know, now we get to talk about that, you know, this is the next part of our discussion, unless you have something, Stephanie.
I just, one more quick thing, I wanted to jump in, I apologize.
That's okay.
I had it boxed, and I completely forgot to talk about it, but your option of getting volunteers to help you do this, if there is something that the town can do to, to facilitate that, I think I would be 100% for that, because we know people who helped us with the WW molding, we know people who helped us with the, if we could talk to Supervisor DiMattei, he was super helpful with us, with our, with all of that, so, I mean, if, if the town can do anything to facilitate finding somebody that, to help do the work for them, I am 100% for that.
I do have one question for Ted, and Ted, I would like to get your opinion, too, on, um, how, how would this affect, this will take 50,000 out of our general fund money, in your opinion? I'd like to have that, please.
Uh, didn't understand exactly what the question is?
So, if we were to take $50,000 out of our general fund, and as in terms of risk, or, you know, lowering amount of our general fund reserves, what is your opinion on that?
Uh, okay, I'll, I'll just describe the general fund balance, and then work down from there. So, I think the general fund balance, uh, at the end of the budget period is about $2.2 million. Council has already reserved $1.2 million for operating reserves, and that is specifically to protect the town in case there is some sort of unexpected item that takes place in terms of lost revenue or catastrophic expense. Okay, that's what that's for. Then is another approximately, if I'm rounding, because I don't wanna open this binder in front of everybody right now, but, uh, there's another approximate 500,000 that are reserved for specific things that council designated in the past, okay? After those two things are taken out, that leaves the, the balance of 500 and some odd thousand that the town manager referenced. That is undesignated, so it doesn't have an appointed use at this time. Uh, it is, uh, a matter of council choice as to how big that number should be. Uh, the government, uh, GFOA, the gov-, uh, the financial, uh, I can't think of what GFOA stands right now, but Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum of two months, which is what you've already set aside. So, it would be council's decision, uh, as to what to do with anything in excess of that. Uh, could it possibly be replenished at some point in the future if we overachieve budget? Yes, but that remains to be seen. And as Steph, that's as far as I'm going with that.
Thank you.
I wouldn't expect any more. Thank you. Stephanie, I'm sorry for interrupting earlier.
That's okay. Um, so, I'm just gonna say, uh, while I didn't play sports at Deloro, I had an opportunity that I could, I did other things, I was also in leadership. Um, one thing I will say is, I graduated in '02. Um, a lot of my friends played tennis. I remember going and watching them. Um, I remember playing tennis in PE and realizing, just like he did, that baseball was more my thing, or hockey, because I played those sports. I also played volleyball in elementary school. Um, but what I will tell you is, being in leadership for four years of high school, and being thoroughly involved in Deloro while I was there, um, it's more about just the courts, it's the self-esteem, it's, like, walking into the gym. So, you guys know the Bonner Gym now, but when I was in, at Deloro, Paul U. Cody Gym was our gym, and I remember the first day of high school, walking into that going, "Wow." Coming from parent's school, and, not that parent's school's not that place, but it's a very small school, but coming to Deloro and going, "Wow, the atmosphere here." And that's kind of the thing about, what I would say about sports, is, it's, uh, like the expression from The Cinderella Story, it's not the, uh, don't let the fear of striking you out keep you from playing the game. Well, it's the same thing with the mentality of, um, basically, if you have a court that has cracks in it, your self-esteem is going to be down. Part of getting your self-esteem up and teaching you camaraderie and, um, doing well in school, because I will tell you this, too, when I graduated Deloro, uh, we had 15 or 20 valedictorians, and most of them were athletes, and they had a 4.5 GPA. So, not only does it teach you, um, relationships, how to excel in life, which I can guarantee a lot of the people that played sports at Deloro when I was there, they have really good jobs now. It teaches you family, uh, atmosphere, and maintaining good friendships, um, excuse my French, but you're one hell of a good, um, athlete when you walk into an atmosphere where you feel pride and where you're, um, you know, you're playing. Um, it's, it's very hard to play without, without uniforms, um, like, I don't know if you guys have seen the Mighty Ducks, but that was the whole thing about that, um, that trilogy, is that they had no uniforms, they had nowhere to play, and they were the worst team in the district. And then, once they got this allocation, I'm not saying I'm pushing for us to do the 90,000 and 50,000, but all I'm saying is, once they got that, their self-esteem got up, you know, they had a stadium, they played in, they ended up in, while you might say that's fiction, that's based on a true story. Um, it was a team in Minnesota, but basically, they went from being the last in the league to actually going national, and then there was a professional hockey team that was named after the Mighty Ducks. So, the whole thing about that is, Deloro is at that level. We've always been at that level, and for us to, um, deprive the, you know, the fellow kids coming to Deloro and past, uh, um, you know, alumni, that feel, we're, it's a detriment to our culture of Deloro. And, um, while I didn't play tennis, I will tell you, I appreciate tennis. It is a very hard competitive sport, and also, from a public safety standpoint, cracks, I mean, we don't, we don't need that on our name, that somebody falls and seriously hurts themselves. I don't know the severity of these cracks, but I could only imagine. Um, and once they start cracking, like, our roads, you know, you basically get to a point where it's like, can we save this, or do we just have, you know what I mean? We don't want it to get to that point. So, long story short, um, in order for us to keep the feel of the Golden Eagles and the mentality, and get you guys out there still playing and making nationals and things like that, you have to have a good court. So, while I don't know, um, because we haven't discussed it, I am for giving a portion of our money, because we did it in the past, to support, um, maintaining the, uh, the tennis court, um, but we need to discuss what that's going to be, so, I just wanted to say that.
And, and I would like to add, I wanna commend you for being proactive about this. Uh, it's way cheaper knowing, especially from road maintenance, it's way cheaper to refurbish something than it is to completely rebuild it, and so, this is, you're, you're doing it right. Um, I, I, and I, and I wanna commend you on that.
Mayor, I do wanna just make, um, an observation. You had said, or maybe clarification, you had said that we've had more money than this in our general fund, but this, like he, like Ted was saying, we, we have all of the things that we need set aside, this is undesigned money. So, y- yes, we do have, I know, I, I know of one road specifically that we've been, um, in communication with, and I definitely wanna take care of that, but I don't think that it has to be one or the other. So, I just wanted to make that observation, because I don't, I think that the comment that you made, um, was a little bit confusing, so I don't know what you quite meant, if you wanted to clarify that, but I don't know that we've had more money in undesigned funds.
Oh, that, I, I just, I knew that our general plan has been larger, our general plan, our general fund has been larger in the past.
Yeah, well, we still have, we still have about 1.2 million, and, and all of those other things. This is side money, yes. Yes.
And I agree, it doesn't have to be one or the other, it's not, we can't just do roads and nothing else. I, I, I agree with that. Um, does anybody wanna, anybody have?
Point, point of order. So, when I mentioned roads, what I was trying, I was making analogy, so you all know, that you, you see the roads out here, where if we let them go too long, they tear apart, you have to either dig them up from the ground and start over, and that's very costly, um, and I was using it as an analogy to tennis courts. If we let them go too long, eventually, there isn't gonna be a tennis court. We're gonna have to start over completely, and that's gonna be quadruple the amount of what we're, that's all I meant by that. I apologize since I came across, kinda.
No, I, no, I.
Yeah, you're good.
So, does somebody wanna start with where they think we should, a starting number? Or do you want me to throw it out?
Go ahead.
Well, you're asking for 60, is that correct?
60,000, is that what?
They're, they're, eight years ago, we gave them 50. They are asking for 60.
Oh, not 99?
No, not the whole 99. They're, they're fundraising for the other 39,000.
I'm pretty sure they would welcome 99,000.
Well, yeah, anybody would. Well, that I'm not prepared to do, but, um, I mean, it was eight years ago, and so, I.
Yeah, inflation.
I, yeah, I, I definitely, um, like I said before, I'm, I'm an advocate for building community. I, I think our, um, our kids are worth it, and, um, I'm gonna count on you seniors to do what I asked you to do, for real, but I, I think that they're worth it.
So, you're saying all 60?
I think that we should give them the 60, and, um, I'm pretty sure that Coach will give us a plaque out there, right? Yeah.
I don't need a plaque.
No, I want a plaque.
Okay. I, I don't think I can support 60. I think that's too much. I mean, I would be comfortable with 10, and I could probably be convinced of 20, but, especially, this is the very beginning of the process, right? You're the, we're essentially, it feels like we're the first persons you're asking, and if the, if the county has stuff to, to, to donate, I think that that would be good, if the school district has stuff they can donate.
They're working on it, but we're not the first people that, they've asked, and the longer it goes, the more expensive it gets.
I agree with that, too, but it's just, there are so many other things that are happening in this town.
It would still leave us with 507,132.
And, and I, and I said this early, if, if this was, if this could come out of our park fund, it would be a no-brainer.
Can I mention something that I think we might be overlooking? Um, it sounds like the majority of us either had kids that went to Deloro, or we went to Deloro. Um, there's gonna be somebody out, out there possibly, potentially, that is going to be either working for the fire department, police department, they might be on the council someday. I guarantee at least one person in this audience, there might be more, is gonna be a valedictorian next year when they graduate from high school. I mean, I wanna reiterate, tennis and the sports at Deloro, it's not like most high schools. The culture is about academics as well as sports, so they're gonna be giving back in the future by playing sports at Deloro, and I'm not trying to get emotional, but I know that for a fact, that, um, that is the culture at Deloro, it's not, um, they don't allow you to play sports if you're a C student. I believe it's C student. You have to have at least a B average or 2.5 to play sports, so these kids aren't just any kids, they're, um, they're, I mean, I don't know, I mean, if somebody wants, does anybody in here a valedictorian?
They don't know yet, they haven't graduated.
Okay, well, I mean, from last year, senior that just graduated, possibly? Okay, is there a past valedictorian here that played sports at Deloro, or tennis at Deloro?
My son was a valedictorian, he was the best player.
And he was a tennis player?
A council member, Youngblood, I, to the, to your point.
Thank you.
To your point, I had made a very similar point when we were, um, fighting for the, at the general plan to, to, uh, rezone the property for the Loomis Union School District. Um, we have several business owners in this town that went through Deloro, went through our schools, and they came back, and they have invested heavily in our town.
Yes.
And so, um, that's, I think that's what good community does.
That's exactly where I was going, thank you.
Yeah, that's the point that I made back then, and I still agree with that same exact point, and I think that that's what builds good community, and I know that, um, you're uneasy with that amount, Mayor, um, but sometimes it's, it's good to take a risk on our future.
I'm, I'm not saying that the tennis program is terrible. I, I think you guys are great. I just think that as, we got elected as, for, as stewards of this money.
Yes.
We need to make sure that we're doing the right thing with it, and 10% of our reserves going to tennis courts, I honestly don't think, if we, if we polled the town, I don't think they would, they would be for 50,000. I, I honestly don't think so. But luckily for you, all you have to do is convince three of us to do it, and so.
Mary, um, I tend to agree with you. I would be the first to admit that I am not for raising taxes, um, or anything, or, um, I'm very fiscally conservative on things, but I think that this is one of those situations, like she mentioned, we have 500,000, we're gonna get more money, hopefully from Costco, hopefully it'll stay open many years, that we can recoup this 50,000 or 60,000.
And these families come back in and spend money, and you know what they were just talking about.
And they're gonna, they're, they spend money in Loomis. Um, these kids, uh, come to our events, they will, I guarantee, they will be, they'll stay in Loomis, the culture is that at Deloro, you know, you had kids that graduated from there, and I'm pretty sure, at least some of them in this audience will, like I said, will be business owners, they might even run for, uh, our seats later on in life, hopefully they will. Um, like, um, Councilmember, uh, I cannot think, I'm sorry, Danny, Cartwright, um, said about you, you're, some of you guys are 18 years old, you might be voting in this next election, so, what I'm saying is that we're giving back by doing this right now. I remember when I was at Deloro and all, and the culture of Paul U. Cody, that's why I keep reiterating that, that was huge when I was there, and they may not, I mean, they have the Bonner Gym, but they don't have anybody that is like that to that point, and what we're doing right now, they're gonna remember this. This 50,000 or 60,000, while we think it's a lot of money, and not only that, our community, a lot of them go to Deloro, or they went to Deloro, so, um, I don't believe in this instance, and I apologize if I'm mistaken, but I don't believe in this instance, us giving, us giving 50 or 60,000 dollars to repave those tennis courts, people are gonna look at us and think that we're not fiscally sound, because in the situation, this, this gives back to the whole town of Loomis, it really does. I mean, where else do these kids graduate from? Placer High School?
What, oh, I mean.
You know what I'm trying to say?
I do, and I agree 100% that schools are the reason that people come to Loomis. I mean, that was the reason I moved to Loomis.
Yeah.
I just.
And I'm, again, like I said, uh, you give to them, you make, you raise their self, yeah, you raise their self-esteem, they do well in school, they graduate, they come back, they contribute, they stimulate our economy, so.
But I understand where you're coming from as well, I'm just mentioning that, in this instance, I think the 50, or 60,000 isn't wasteful.
It's odd that I'm being the one fiscally conservative.
No, listen, I, I.
That's a fiscally conservative speaking of coin.
I don't think that this is being fiscally irresponsible. I don't think this is being fiscally irresponsible, because like he said, $10,000 for one family, okay? You times up all the kids, the, the, um, the competitions and the different tournaments that they're gonna have, and you bring people in from all over the region, that is an economic development driver for our town. We will recoup this money, it's not like it's just gonna be gone.
I, you, you know my opinion, that's here, what you have to say, and then see where we can land on a number.
Yeah, I, um, you know, for whatever reason, I thought 50,000 was gonna be the ask, and so that's the number that kept floating around in my head, and I feel like that was the number that I think you got last time from us. Um, and obviously, you know, I feel like it's very, very important to support Deloro and our, our kids and our community, and, and, you know, you guys are great, and the school is great, um, and I do think that it is important for us to, um, to support it, and, you know, we are a small town, we don't have a parks, uh, parks budget, um, And, you know, we are a small town, we don't have a parks budget, but we should. And, you know, maybe this will be the onus for us to start and really to develop something like that. But I do think that, I think I would be in favor for 50, 50,000 for the courts. And that's just because it was what was in my mind.
Even if I, even if we give them 20,000, we're still, I mean, that's $20,000 they didn't have before.
Yeah, we're still giving their money.
I mean, it's not like it's, we're not, I'm saying nothing. I'm just saying, I feel like that number's high, but did you have a?
I was just doing a quick calculation.
Are you doing inflation to see what it?
I was just trying to do a relational comparison, so, just nerding out. On the calculator.
Oh, thank you. Check one, check two. Would you look at it in those terms, as you mentioned, Mayor, that it would constitute roughly 50%? It's...
10%.
Oh, correction, yes, I had 10 in my mind, yeah, but yeah, roughly 10%. It's actually, it's a little bit less, if, at the 50 level. At the 60, it's, yeah, a little bit more, right, so. Would you be open to a compromise? So, I know that the larger numbers are not palatable to you. But I believe that the 10 that you mentioned before is a bit of a drop in the bucket, given the cost, and I'm intimately familiar with construction costs, unfortunately. So, what could be something that would be more than the 10, but then, something that you could still stomach and, and feel good knowing the other obligations that the town has and could have, because we can't, we don't have a crystal ball, and we don't know what emergency may come our way, and we have to be prepared for it. And that's part of the fiscal stewardship that we're charged with as electeds. So, I think my, my observation here is that we're all in agreement that this is a worthy cause to donate money to, it's just really the question of how much. And to your point, well-made about the parks money, that's a different pool of money. And so, I'm, not that I'm paranoid, but I'm always thinking about this railroad track and a derailment happening, and then having a spill, a toxic waste spill, because, you know, a lot of the tankers that go by, they're just not fuels, there are other things, too. And we've been lucky in the past not to have that, so. But I am cognizant of that possibility, and then what expenses we may have of that, and things like that, so.
That's why we still have 1.2 million aside from this. Like, this is not all we have.
No, I, I understand. I understand that there's different allocations. So, what would be a middle point that you would be comfortable with?
Yeah, like I said, I think 20,000 is probably my max. But I think that with that, and doing everything that, within our power to find somebody who can help with volunteering, I think that, I mean, if we could get, I'm not saying that this could happen, but if we could get someone that could donate, you know, $20,000 worth of materials. Right. And if that happened, and we gave them 50,000, 60,000, we've essentially paid for all of the entire thing. But I don't know that we can get the donation.
Then that value would be 40, yeah, okay.
And I just want to add one more thing, just because with, I mean, yes, we have to pay for the roads, but for me, any, that 500,000 that we have right now, essentially the 2 million that we have right now, that gives me a cushion when we have all the legal battles that we have.
Sure, yes.
It makes me more comfortable doing what I think is right in those instances as well.
And thank you for bringing that up, because from, and I worked for a law firm for many years, and you have to have a war chest if you're going to go fight your battles. And you're as good as your case is, as good as your representation, sometimes it's even more important than the facts, so, I get that. How about, could you, could you, could you do okay with 35? I'm trying to be the middleman here, right? I know, because I know where Amanda is, and I know where you are, I'm trying to make something happen.
I mean, I'm going to, what I'm, I'm going to do something that's completely against my opinion.
Okay.
But, does anybody want to make a motion?
I was going to say, I want to make a motion for $50,000, that's what I was about to say.
For how much?
50,000. If we can't do 60, I'll say make a motion for 50.
Let me think, I'm going to, I'm looking at all you. I'm going to second.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Aye.
Mayor Ring?
No.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. All right.
Can I just make a point? Can I just make a quick point?
Congratulations to all of you.
I'll be looking for that plaque.
And I, and I know you all hate me, but thank you for coming out and supporting this. You guys did a great job. The fact that you were here...
Yeah, made a huge impact.
Yeah.
And your public speaking was great.
Yes.
But your energy, you can feel it. And thank you so much for each and every one of you for coming out. And when you get older, you can run for town council.
Totally.
I want to just make a comment, since y'all are company. Our next item, we're giving money to that, and that doesn't necessarily relate to Del Aro as much as...
It's a different pot of money and everything.
But what I'm making a point to is that we're going to give a large amount of money to that, and for us not to give money to this.
So, we can talk about that in a second, but not yet.
Okay. Well, I will.
Thank you, Del Aro tennis team.
Thank you all for showing up.
So, Mr. Mayor, before we all adjourn here, there are some housekeeping items on this money, if you don't mind. I think it's prudent to come back to the next council meeting and put it on consent to adopt the resolution identifying the money for this project. And second, I would consider that the town not release the funding until the rest of the funding is available, so we can continue to earn interest on that, if that would be of...
Until they have all their money.
They have their money. So, the commitment's there, we keep the money, and when they come up the rest, then we give them the money. Is that fair?
Did you hear that, Coach? Okay. Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right. Do we need a?
What, you need a drink, David?
I kind of, I do, do, oh. All right, let's just, yeah. All right, let's move on then. So, item, business item 10, we have the Placer Land Trust funding request. Why don't we give them two minutes, a minute to walk out?
I know.
Sure, yeah, yeah, let's take five minutes and then we'll be back, okay?
Well, I was going to, I was just waiting for him to get done talking, because so, for future... So, for future, but I just wanted to say point of order.
I would say point of order is that, what a border is like with...
Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you.
But I just wanted to let you guys know about the intersection. I'm actually, I'm the officer.
Wonderful, so we will be meeting then very soon.
I'm on that meeting, too.
She and I are on that community meeting.
Well, I'm Lena Banks, and I'm really looking forward to talking to you guys. I've already been talking to our principal, so we've got a lot of things we need to talk about, but I totally agree that it needs to be met.
Okay, thank you, very interested in you. I'm Amanda. Nice to meet you guys. Have a wonderful, you're welcome.
So, what can happen is either a non-mayor, whoever's not running, you can say, "Mayor, I'd like to make a motion." Or you'd say, you could say, and then the mayor could say, "I'd like to call the question."
Okay.
It's another way of saying, "I'd like to make a motion." It's sort of like you did, but it was clear, like, you know, I'm just, by Danny doing this, like a deal.
I know, I was waiting for him to finish talking.
And then it wasn't, it was like, it was kind of like, it was just, it was just putting a fine point on it that you don't want to bite.
Well, and the whole thing was...
So, it's okay to say, "I appreciate this, I appreciate everybody's support." Because it was clear it wasn't going to be a fine point, and that's okay. It's okay.
But it would have been, I was like, I was like, no, that would have been, I think, for all of us to have. And then to have to deliberate here versus thinking about it. But you have to make the decision, but...
Yeah, anyways.
Thank you very much for letting us know that. I was, I was trying to...
To the Placer Land Trust funding request. Who is in charge of that?
It seems like a lot of these are all queued up by me tonight, so I'm the lucky one. So this item that the council has performed tonight is on the Clover Valley Preservation. Originally, the town was approached by Placer Land Trust looking for a donation for the property. Since that time, the property, 1042 acres of Clover Valley, has been preserved due to the partnership with Jessup, Placer County Office of Education, Placer County, the City of Lincoln, and City of Rockland. So the financial contributions to acquire the land has been done. So after that, they brought the item to the council at the March 11th meeting to look at potentially contributing to the ongoing maintenance as a one-time fund on there. And at the March 11th meeting, there were several questions that council had. They felt that they wanted that the Placer Land Trust to be here to be able to answer those questions. In particular was, you know, what's the property fire mitigation plan, property access locations, you know, and also the final one was what was the balance of the tree mitigation fund on there? And all those things have been provided. We actually got a response from Jeff Darlington on the questions, and it was unfortunately after the packet was released, all of council has those responses to those questions. But tonight, we actually have Brandy Waters with Placer Land Trust that can talk in detail if you have questions for that. So tonight, what staff would be looking for from council is whether or not you want to donate to the project or provide a different direction for this. At the conclusion of the two-year budget, we anticipate there will be $245,770,000 that is available to use, and the tree fund would be an appropriate fund to use for this project because it does preservation of oak trees. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you, and then maybe Brandy wants to come up and could field some questions if you have some.
Do you have a presentation, or you're just here to answer questions?
I was just here to answer any questions that you might have, knowing that you'd already seen multiple presentations from our organization.
Right. So can you clarify, at least for me, can you clarify, it sounded like when you first presented, you had approached the Native American tribes that were local, and they had no interest at all in helping you purchase it? But now, are they taking it over for me?
No, so there's interest by the United Auburn, I'm sorry, United Auburn Indian Communities to potentially purchase it from Jessup. We will still hold the conservation easement on that. They have not made a definitive answer on that. They're doing all their investigative work and due diligence to try to figure out what that entails. That just means that they would have the overall purchase of it, and they have a lot more funds than Jessup does to kind of move it forward in the direction it needs to go.
So then the management of the site would be up to them, then?
In a sense, yes. It's still all within the range of the conservation easement, yes, sir.
So are you, how likely do you think that is to happen?
I would not even be able to guess. At this point, it's just very cursory. They are doing their mitigation, research on it, what that means as far as the fire danger, all of that. So they're doing a really good job of trying to ensure that they understand what they're taking on.
So if we donated money, who would it go to?
Well, the conservation easement, the actual sustaining portion of the land, it would go to us, to the stewardship part of it.
To the trust.
We are the land trust, yes. So we are responsible for all the stewardship of the land itself.
Okay. And then last one, sorry. In your...
If I may clarify, there would be restricted funds. So it would be completely restricted just to Clover Valley, just for stewardship. So just wanted to...
And in the letter that responded to the questions, it sounded like there was no intent for the foreseeable future to ever have any access up of Sierra College. That seemed like that was the way it was worded.
Up of Clover Valley?
Into Clover Valley, yeah.
From which access point?
From the...
So just off of Clover Valley Road, is what you're speaking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That is, I wouldn't say that that is off the table, because it's not really, we haven't explored all of the angles of it, but it's, as Jeff said, it's a private road. We've had multiple problems with other private roads that we've had access to our properties, and there's no desire to go that route at all.
Is it private as soon as you get off of Sierra College?
I believe it is, Clover Valley Road itself is private.
Okay.
And it crosses the railroad tracks.
Correct. It goes under the railroad track.
Yeah, it goes under the overpass, the railroad track, and it's very narrow. There'd be zero reason, except for maybe fire danger, you know, for some sort of emergency response, to want to try to utilize that space.
We just had an accident on that road, right, Wes?
On the railroad road?
That was Boulder Ridge.
No, no, no. That was up for the...
Oh, Boulder Ridge, oh.
Okay, that was all I had. It sounded like you were...
Well, no, I was just gonna say that I know that it sounded like you were kind of making sure, and I will reiterate what I had said before, Jessup has zero desire to hold on to this. And the PCOE is helping with a lot of, you know, I don't know, some of the footprint and some of those different things and the educational piece of it. Jessup just wanted to secure it, but it's not in their business model, nor do they want to, you know, maintain control. That's why they have gotten Placer Land Trust and the Department of Education, and then, as you know, Rockland and Lincoln both put in significant amount. This, what we, this was only just for the upkeep, so that every other people could have more, people could have access in like the educational things, and it will be open to all ages. Those historical societies were involved, because I went to the media day, and it was such a beautiful, it's a beautiful area, but the entire collaboration was really, really exciting. And I think, have you been there? Have you guys been down over there and checked it out? Well, you, it is...
I mean, I tried to, but it was closed.
Oh, okay. It is stunning, and it's, but I think that it would be a historical thing for Loomis to contribute to the upkeep and maintaining of this, and to keep it this beautiful space that it is. So I really think that we have an opportunity to take part in history with this.
I didn't know that Jessup, I mean, you probably said this before, and I just zoned it out, but I didn't know that Jessup wasn't interested in holding on to the property.
No, they don't.
I think that's great that they helped facilitate this, then.
Yeah, that's all that they wanted to do was help facilitate.
I have a question. When, is there some sort of timeline for the Indian tribe that they will let you know when they want to purchase it? No? Okay. And then I know you said that you're still kind of fleshing out some major details about this project.
Correct.
And do you have an idea of timeline when that might flesh out?
No, it's, right now, we're still dealing with the trash that was remaining on the property.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, so they're still, and they're still learning the different entities that are involved as far as the fire mitigation requirements. This is well out of the purview of Rockland to have fire mitigation on 402 acres. So it's going to entail county to get involved as well, to know what we need to have done with that. It's just going to be slow. It's going to be a slow process to make sure we do it right.
And then with your restrictive easement or deed and all that, you've got to have that all written and put in to that.
The conservation easement is complete. It has been filed. The county of Placer did enjoin coholder with the conservation easement.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Do you have a question about the conservation easement in general, like what it means? Are you comfortable with what? Okay.
Okay, so my question might relate to that. So first question, so I have two. First question is if they do buy it, where's our money going to? Because the second question I have is, because they're sovereign nation, how does that affect us in being able to access that, and our money going to that? I mean, that's federal ground if they buy it, correct?
No.
Because that's what a sovereign nation is, isn't it?
Yeah, no, they would just be the owner of the property. The conservation easement states that it has to have public access. So that is the protection of the land itself. So that's why I wanted to explain the conservation easement, is that it absolutely is public access, that has restrictions on what can and can't be done on the property. But the whole purpose of the entities that we have created with PCOE and Placer, the county, with Lincoln and Rockland, is that it has public access. Just slow to release and making sure that we're doing it the right way.
So again, if they buy it, just like they've bought other plots of land, or I think Maida Park, who would be, who would we be, because going on, your question, you asked when would they be buying, who would be, I can't talk, who would we, sorry, BBW, be giving that money to? Would it be the...
It's Placer Land Trust under our stewardship fund.
But if they buy it, they own it. We're giving the money to them, right?
No, no. We own, we hold the conservation easement, and we always will with Placer County. We are responsible for all of the maintenance and general upkeep of the property as far as the way it's held.
Like fire mitigation, et cetera?
Exactly, yes, yeah.
They're, I mean, if they, if they, any property owned it, they would own it in fee, but it would be subject to the conservation easement. So their use would be severely restricted to what the conservation easement is. And just because, and I'll just say, just because it's a tribe that would buy it, it wouldn't be tribal land, it wouldn't be property that's taken in trust. It would just be, they would be owning it like they would any other private property owner would own it.
Like house under your value.
The only land that is subject to, exempt from like other laws or land use control for local agencies, it has to be trust land that's taken in trust.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry? Okay, just a quick question, this came, how, see, in your letter, you talked about how there's, you were getting goats to graze and fire mitigation, how much is the fire mitigation costs for that? Do you have an estimate?
I don't have a number on that. I'd have to get back to you on that one, yeah.
700,000, 100,000?
No, I wouldn't even... It also depends upon what the requirements that they're going to place on that property are.
And you're still, okay, okay. Yeah, I... Yes, let's do that.
That's a good idea, that public comment.
Thank you. All right, let's open this up for public comment. Yeah, thank you. Anybody in the audience like to make a comment on this?
Jean Wilson, 4301 Barton Road, and I guess I kind of have mixed feelings about this. I like preserving oak trees, that's why I was instrumental in getting us our oak tree preservation, and at least it would go to preserving oak trees. But I think one of my qualms is the town of Loomis giving money out to an outside place, outside entity, and particularly when we are not really going to have access unless we want to go all the way around and come down Clover Valley, or go all the way to Lincoln and come down Clover Valley. So I guess if we can't have some access so that it benefits the people of Loomis, I have qualms about giving the money for that. I think about the tree ordinance, the tree fund, which, what was it, 245,000 at the end of the two years, something like that. I know that we've had issues on how do we get, how do we use that responsibly, and so yes, this would preserve oak trees. On the other hand, that fund is not likely to grow much like it has in the past, because the rules were changed and most of the residential parcels are now exempt unless it is a splitable parcel. So we're not likely to be able to get a lot of money in as we have in the past. I understand we may well not get anything from the subdivision behind railings, because it's one of the negotiating points, and if we can't, we may not get that one. So that would be a big one that comes in, or doesn't come in, and one of the last ones probably. The other thought that I'm having on this is if this is for maintenance fund, and we don't really know, things are not in shape yet, they don't really know what's going on, I think maybe the thing to do is to keep it in mind that when we see what more is happening, and see if there is any possibility at some point that the town would have, the citizens here would have some access. Maintenance is an ongoing thing, they don't have to have all their maintenance money, I presume, right now. So maybe that's something that we consider keep in mind for the future, but not make a commitment right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Does anybody else have any comments they want to make? I don't see any here, anybody online?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sonia.
Hi, Sonia Kepler, 5630 Tudor Way, Loomis. I'd just like to say that I concur with Commissioner Wilson. I believe that the, are you there? Okay, okay. I concur with Commissioner Wilson's comments. I believe that the money in the oak tree mitigation fund should benefit the town and shouldn't go outside of our municipality. Thank you.
Is there anybody else online?
No.
Nope, all right, so let's close public comment. I want to make a comment, and I'm trying to formulate it. I don't like that we don't have access, or limited access. And so for me, that kind of says, well, we should be giving less, if any. But I think that the fact that it's right on our borders and the fire danger from that, giving money to help reduce fire risk for our town, I think is a justifiable reason to give something. But I would also be fine with holding off and waiting to see what plays out. I think that that's also a pretty good argument.
Can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I've been thinking about this and was looking forward to hearing from my fellow council members what they thought, and also the public. I just really feel like it's not the right time yet. I love this project. Clover Valley is one of the most beautiful places on earth, besides Loomis, that is. But they really haven't got it all finalized yet, and they're, you know, still working out some of the major details. Loomis is on their border, we potentially may have an access point at some point, and I mean, it would be nice to know if that was the case. I agree with the fire, but I feel like we just need to have more information, and I'm at this point not willing to vote yes on this.
Go ahead.
All right. We spoke about this a couple meetings ago, and I'm not going to reiterate my comments verbatim, but I'll give you a quick summary. The source of these funds, because these are allocated funds, are from our tree mitigation fund, in my opinion, are ill-gotten. I believe the tree ordinance which secured these funds, but my exact words at the time were, they confiscated these funds from property owners were an affront to property rights. And so if I had my druthers, I would have all those funds given back to the people and businesses that they were confiscated from, because it's their property. However, I did say that because of the California Environmental Quality Act, which is a law that has been weaponized by radicals to stop or thwart development, our tree ordinance serves a utility for that. The ordinance, what it does, is it says that this property owner who is developing their property has done the environmental mitigation by complying with the tree ordinance, so that the, it staves off the SEQA lawsuits that any crazy person can file for their own agenda. So even though on principle I am completely against the tree ordinance as an affront to property rights, I do see its utility here. And the funds are, they are allocated, so we cannot spend them on anything else but what is specified within the ordinance. And the Clover Valley project meets those guidelines. It's the preservation and propagation of heritage oak trees. We have a balance here after we anticipate the adopt a tree program and pruning expenses remaining, balance, as Jean mentioned, of $245,000. So the question here is, it's two. Do we want to contribute to the Clover Valley project, and then if so, how much? Now, I am actually for a donation to this worthy project. I'm not settled on an amount as of yet, but I do agree that it would be probably prudent at this point to commit to the idea, but not the dollar amount as of right now, given that there are some details to be worked out, especially with access and future ownership. So that is my position.
Thanks, Danny. Do you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm kind of conflicted. I feel like this is one of those things, like true or false, where if you don't really know the full answer, sometimes you vote false. Where I'm going with that is, there's a lot that goes into this. I agree with Danny's point, I agree with Jan's point. Where I go with Danny is that he is right, that's how I feel, kind of, that property tax owners should be able to do what they want with their property. And if that money was actually taken from property tax, I'm not cool with that. But at the same time, I also will say that I feel like if we're going to use money from the tree mitigation fund, it should be for Loomis. And if we can't access this area, and maybe down the road we can, but right now, there's not a clear access point to Loomis, I feel like at this point, I can't vote for something that is basically going on behalf of people in the town that may not agree with it. So I don't have enough information to vote yes on it at this time, or dollar amount. So I'm kind of in that realm where, like even what Jean said, so...
All right, before we move on, I just want to say that the ordinance is not up for discussion, so we're not talking about the ordinance at all, but we, whether or not we're moving, we're changing that, I just want to make sure that we shouldn't be discussing...
I was just making a point that I agree with what he said as well. What ordinance, what?
You said you were against the ordinance, and you...
Oh, no, he didn't necessarily say that way.
As the point of clarification, though, that is the ordinance, right? As an aside, that is the source of where these funds came from. That's my only relevance in mentioning that.
And when I mentioned it, what I was making a point to him about, that was a good point, and I don't want to vote on something that came from property tax owners. They should be able to do what they want with that money if it came from them, right?
I was just going to make the point in saying that it's fine if you guys want to wait and see until they have more of a clear timeline, or, you know, whatever, but I think it's very short-sighted and lack of vision to say, because there's not an entrance right off of Sierra College, because there's other issues with that. Like, there are safety issues of how to get in and out of that thing. It's not that we won't have access, anybody in the region will have access. This, I agree with what you were saying, Mayor Ring, about it being on our border, and that we should contribute money because of the fire mitigations and things like that. But to say that we shouldn't contribute because there's not an easy access point, or because it's outside of Loomis, but the same people don't want people building on our borders, and that's essentially what is keeping it from doing, it's kind of contradictory, and I think it's a lack of vision to not be involved in something that is historical. And I, to Danny's point earlier, that is exactly some of the shortfalls that this town, respectfully, okay, I'm not, whatever, but the shortfall that this town has had with the lack of vision, because it has to be one way all the time, and I don't agree with that. And so I think that we should strongly consider this. If you want to wait till things are more outlined, then I'm okay with that, but I definitely... But I definitely think that we should bring this back, and I think that we should give money because this is, not only is it historical, but it is, like we talked about before, it's preserving open spaces right on our border, which is consistent with what this town has wanted.
Okay. Yeah, I think the consensus seems to be that we all, we all seem to think that this is a good idea, just not right now.
Yeah.
And so I think, I don't know if, do we need, do we need to give you a timeline? How would that work then in order, what kind of direction do you need?
So I think it would be helpful if we knew exactly what, what items that were worked out that she would make you comfortable to bring this forward for discussion again. Is it ownership? Is it the use? I mean, is it cost, all of that stuff? What are the triggers you're looking for to bring, be brought back to you?
Yeah. For me, I would like to know how much it's going to cost for the fire mitigation. It's just that. I would like to know who's owning the property and what their plan is for it. And I don't know, is anybody else?
Well, I just, I wanted to retract my statement real quick. When I did mention ownership, and it actually is immaterial because of the holding of Placer Land Trust. So it doesn't matter who owns it, right? It is controlled. It's almost like a CCNR of a neighborhood, right? So just, I'll retract that. And so I think at this point, if, if the concerns of the council right now rest more on the access, the ingress egress and the safety of that, that's a valid point. So I'll just reiterate my position so that there's no confusion. I don't care who owns it. It doesn't matter because Placer Land Trust is controlling it. I am for a donation and in fact, a sizable donation. But that is to be determined, that amount, by the council. And as far as the timing, again, my position is, given that the ownership is not the issue for me, it was more about just the access. And if that is something that we can get more clarification on sooner than later, then I'm more likely to act sooner than later.
Does the owner of the property determine, just to clarify, how soon, how quickly things get changed inside? Like if we have more trails or if we have a building there with an education center? Or does that determine who owns it or does the land trust make all of those decisions?
Those are excellent questions, Mayor. I'm going to lean on Brandy, who may not even have the answers to that, but we can certainly try.
I can hold the answers on that, that's for sure. It does determine, the ownership does determine the direction, for sure. There are restrictions in the Eastman. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but access is the issue to public. That is, that is the requirement. The numbers, the timing, all of that has not been determined. PCO8 being one of the larger funders has very big visions for it, and that's going to take money. So that, that is not what we're asking from, for you. But that is part of how it's, you know, how it's developed, is what the big picture's going to be. If I may address the access issue, the reason we don't want to go down Clover Valley Road is because that impacts your residents. If we tried to open up Clover Valley Road and say, oh yeah, here's your access point right here, it will be flooded and it would be unsafe. And that's the reason that Jeff Darlington mentioned, that that's not the access point that we want to have. He did mention in that letter to you as well, that, like foot traffic, I mean, that would be a wonderful place to have, like a pedestrian or a bicycle lane, that sort of thing, to go down that way and have access from Loomis. You know, that's part of the Loomis side to deal with, but we don't want to have that be the way that everyone gets into. If you can imagine what Big Hill was like when it first opened, it was, it was pretty messy.
Thank you for that consideration about our traffic. But you're saying that there would be foot access or bike or?
I can't say that, but I'm saying that that is an access point that would be available for something like that. And I think that would be fantastic. I mean, I think that would be a way for Loomis to work with Placer Land Trust and whomever the ownership is to have access point like that. And maybe make that part of what your resolution would be, is that this is a foot traffic only. But you, I promise you, you don't want to open up that Pandora's box to have that be a sticking point for.
A vehicle access.
Yes, correct.
So would there be a chance for you to let our town manager know when you get to that point in the decision-making process? When you get to, when you finalize, you know, maybe the owners get solidified and you get further along in the project, that you would actually be able to let him know?
I think Wes is in direct contact with Jeff frequently.
Yeah, because I do think that, you know, it would be, that's, you know, some important information that we really need to be prudent and have that before we make that decision.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Is that enough direction?
I'll work with that. We'll, we'll discuss it and come bring it back when it's appropriate.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. I'm sorry, before I do, does anybody else have anything last they want to say? Okay. All right. Let us move on to Pioneer Community Energy Programs. Are you going to introduce this, Wes?
Yeah.
Okay. Eleven.
All right. The council had asked previously, we found out that Pioneer Energy is providing some great programs. And I think, Mayor Ring, you brought up the idea of having them come actually present the programs to the council and to the public. Terrence is here tonight with Support with Lisa to kind of give us a run-through of the programs. And they've also left us lots of wonderful literature that we can hand out as well, too.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ring and members of the council. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. As stated, we're going to give a prepe overview, but I will say, I was very disappointed when all the kids left. I thought they were here for this presentation. So it broke my heart. But, yeah, so.
Well, good thing they left. They might be hitting you guys up for money, too.
I was wondering if that was coming down the pipe. Yeah, so again, to what Mr. Heathcock said, we just want to provide an overview of the several different types of programs that is offered to Pioneer customers that are here in your constituency. It is a brief, you know, overview of the program, but we're very fortunate, our organization, to have an exceptional customer care team that knows these programs a lot deeper than I do. And if there's questions that Lisa and I can't field, then we can definitely put you in contact with them and get those questions addressed. But I'm hopeful and optimistic that I can, we can answer those questions. So next slide, please. If it's helpful, just real quick overview, Pioneer Community Energy, as it says there, it's a community-owned, not-for-profit purchaser of energy. It's actually a joint powers authority. Obviously, Loomis is one of the other 10, is one of 10 communities that are part of that joint powers authority. And for, you know, just for purposes of clarity, what Pioneer Community Energy does is it purchases the energy. So it's solely there to purchase the energy parts. When you get your bill, you're going to see line items of different charges on your bill. Transmission, distribution, because those wires are owned by PG&E, that's still a PG&E charge, but Pioneer buys the energy portion. So just a quick distinction, if that's helpful at all. I think the, you know, the one thing to point out here is Director Ring is on the board, and the board's priority is to save customers' money. And so when you look across Pioneer territory, the energy purchase part of it, the average savings is 10% for Pioneer customers over PG&E. And since implementation in 2018, Pioneer saved its customers 108 million. It was expected 31 million would be saved in 2025 alone, but those, the early estimates are coming back where it's actually more than that. So we're very encouraged about that. And then just by way of a little bit more information, Loomis customers have saved almost $2 million that participate in Pioneer. Next slide, please. So this is just act, is kind of an agenda to go over these programs that we're going to go into more detail about. There's the LED discount, AC tune-up rebate, the Power Shift Rewards, GridGen, which I think may have, may stimulate some conversation. Online marketplace, we actually won't cover. It's basically a tool on the website, more so than a program. And then our commercial programs, hourly flex pricing and ICE Energy. And then there's also one slide at the end that's just for our participating member agencies that could potentially be of interest. I don't know what type of infrastructure the town has, but we'll cover that, and that's called the Clean Fleet Revenue Program. So jumping in, we'll start with probably the easiest one, the LED discount. And effectively what this program is, we partnered with a company called Greenlight to provide heavily discounted LED bulbs at participating stores. Right now, there are 26 stores that participate in this program. Oh, next slide, I'm sorry. So 26 stores throughout Pioneer territory. We don't have one in Loomis yet, but we're, we'll continue to work on that. There are others in Rockland and surrounding communities that are pretty close. But as you can see there, it is a heavy discount. I mean, LED bulbs generally last six to 12 years. They use 90% less electricity, and they're a lot cooler. So there's a lot of benefits to these bulbs. But a four-pack in general is 99 cents. So, you know, we do, we provide that. The good part about this is there's no application, there's no eligibility requirements. In fact, technically, anyone could go in and participate in this program. But the one benefit, well, another benefit, obviously, from cost savings because it's using less electricity and then you get the discount, is they do a good job of advertising our programs for people that come in. So if someone's looking at buying the bulbs, they're going to also potentially, with stores that participate, get some information about our programs, like somewhat like what you're getting today. Next one, please. AC tune-up rebate, this is a very popular program. Basically, what this one does, it provides up to $75 rebate for having your HVAC tuned up. And that's recommended to be done at least once a year. So you hear the commercials all the time, the guys in the big red truck and whomever. There's actually 116 different contractors that participate, have participated in this program to date. But, you know, if a member goes in, they need their AC tuned up, they can get up to $75 discounted or repaid via check on that tune-up itself. And that's a benefit to our customers because, one, obviously, the savings. But, you know, you're tuning up your HVAC, it'll run more efficiently, so you're using less energy and saving money. And especially during that time of use, which you'll hear me talking about, when the grid is stressed, when it's hottest, if it's running more efficiently, that's when electricity's the most expensive. So customers can go online and kind of watch you through there. Obviously, you need to be a Pioneer customer. You find your licensed contractor, you fill out the application, you can do that online or mail it in, and our customer care staff will take care of that, get it looked at, make sure it's all complete, and then get you out a check in about three to four weeks. Our next one is Power Shift Rewards. And effectively what this program does, it encourages customers to reduce energy during peak periods of stress on the grid. So, you know, when there's energy issues and/or the grid is stressed, then what this program does is, if you sign up for it, you sign up, you get $25 MasterCard right out of the gate, but then you get alerts. So you would go on, you'd complete the information, you could say, how do you want to be notified? And when Pioneer calls an event or KISO calls an event, then you're notified, hey, if, you know, if you're able to reduce your energy usage, you can get up to $2 kilowatt rewards for the, every kilowatt hour that you save as compared to the 10 previous non-event days. So this is another, you know, another, it's about the grid. It's about reducing the stress on the grid and then trying to help provide a little savings for the customer, as well as you're going to reduce your energy bill because when events are called, that's when the rates on the grid are, you know, generally the most expensive. Did I miss anyone on that? $10 if you refer a friend, too. So there you go, even more savings. So the next one, the GridGen program. And I think anymore people are pretty familiar with this. Phase one of GridGen, when we first rolled this out to our customers, it was solar and battery. So in order to be eligible for this, it had to be both solar and battery, so solar and storage. And what it is, is you install rooftop solar on your home, and it does have to be rooftop solar, and then you get a Tesla power wall that captures any excess energy that your home's not using while you're, you know, you're charging during the day. If the home's not using, it'll charge your batteries, and then your batteries are charged, and it'll throw it back out on, to the grid under the solar billing program. There's no upfront cost for this. The rate started at 14 and a half cents per kilowatt hour. And then, as you can see, the first battery is $115 flat fee a month, 75 for each additional battery. When you go on, if someone were interested in this, they'd go on, they'd fill out the application, they would, you know, there's questions you're going to have to answer, and then they say, go ahead and contact us now. It's not any sort of contract, obviously. It just means that our Tesla coach or the project advisor will reach out and start talking to you and going through this process. It is, you know, it's an involved process. It generally takes about three to four months from the time you say go to the time installation takes place. It is, the installation itself on the homeowner's property takes about a week, but there's a whole bunch of other, other things that need to be done. They need to do analysis, they need to do cost-benefit modeling to make sure it makes sense, and they walk you through this whole process. The second version of this is the battery retrofit. So this is for customers that already had solar, and where it makes sense, now they can go ahead and add battery to their home. Generally, the flat fees determine on how much the project construction would cost, the type of upgrades that might be needed through the circuitry, if there's other infrastructure enhancements that might need to be made. From what my experts tell me, it's generally around that 14 and a half cent, but it's going to vary based on different factors. So it'll look different for each family. I think, you know, just going into a little bit more of what the benefits are, obviously, you're producing your own power. You're getting that 14 and a half cent kilowatt per hour with a low 1.9% escalator. Any energy that you generate in excess, you can use that during peak time. So when the rates are way higher, that's when you can supplement your power usage, bring your rates down. It is a 25-year contract. If a customer decides at some point they want to opt out, they can, but they will be responsible for fair market value. They don't actually own the equipment itself. The company that we work with, Participate Energy, maintains it, so you're never responsible for the solar panels, you're never responsible for the battery itself, they'll continue to maintain it, and it's even insured separately from the homeowner. So it's not something that the homeowner would have to carry. But again, the whole idea here is in both cases, bring those rates down and provide savings, you know, a benefit to our Pioneer customers. And then I think, we can go to the next one, but I think I covered it. That's just basically an overview. Those are the two places you can go to enroll. You can go to Tesla or you can go to Pioneer's website and walk through that process, and then someone will contact you and continue working, working through that. All right, so we're into our commercial ones. Now, this is the hourly flex. This is for agricultural customers, and because their price rates, their power rates vary by hour, they can sign up for this program. It's kind of similar to the Power Shift Rewards in the sense that you go to the portal, you can identify when rates are whatever, you know, whatever that rate is going to be, and you can plan your operations around that to try to reduce your power as much as possible. It's a partnership with PG&E. It is a pilot. It's new. We just did get our first customer. There was some struggles with it being on hold for a bit, but it is back open, and we expect that to be the case. So we do have our first customer. But they have incentives also about automation, so different types of equipment, they can help offset some of those costs. Then our next one, ICE Energy. This is for our commercial and industrial customers. This is basically an energy storage, energy storage equipment. What it does is you're going to, it creates ice on your HVAC. It's an attachment system that attaches to your HVAC, and it creates ice in the off-hours that can be utilized during the peak time. So that time of use, when the rates are highest off the grid, then this comes in to cool that building and lower the effective rate, or lower the charge for your, well, your electricity bill during that time. This one is also a contract. The customer doesn't actually own the equipment. It's maintained by ICE Energy over the 20-year term. So, you know, they're always going to maintain that, but you do have to sign that 20-year contract as well under this. And there's, there's different, it's an on-bill repayment system. So when you go, you're going to be, it's generally, they're saying three years, but when we talk to them, it sounds like there's some flexibility there. They're going to work with customers, three, five, seven-year on-bill repayment, depending on the terms of it. Generally, what they say is about $3,500 savings per year on each system that's installed. And there's, I think right now, there's been funds allocated for up to 100. They're out there beating the streets right now, talking to a lot of people. I think they're up to about 300 customers they've contacted. They have several agreements to participate in the works and working to finalize some of those contracts. But it is new, and we want to make sure this is a proof of concept that's going to work. And, you know, we're hopeful, optimistic that we can get some of these out there in our communities, you know, by, by end of year. And then the very last one, running through a quick, this is that Clean Fleet Revenue Program. And basically what this is, is there's a program through Cap'n Trade where public agencies, if they have electric vehicle infrastructure, you can go through a CARB program and you can actually get credits for this infrastructure, this EV infrastructure that you have, and then it generates revenue back to the city. And you guys don't have to do anything. We do have a master MOU for all of our participating entities, so all 10 can sign up for this. And they'll walk you through. Don Eckert, our CEO, I know he reached out and said, hey, this program's available if you guys want to talk about it and see. to talk about it and see how it could potentially benefit, then, uh, we're happy to do that. We'll set you up with Fuse, who's our partner on this. Again, I, I don't want to be presumptuous, I'm not sure what the, what or if there is EV charging in the town in Loomis, or if that's, would be much of a benefit, but we did want to make sure that you were aware that this is another program that's out there. And, and so you know, we will continue, um, we'll continue to try to develop these programs with the board's guidance and approval that makes sense to our customers. So if anyone has any ideas, we have a community advisory committee that we lean on heavily to get their ideas, their members of the community that come in and provide ins-, uh, insight input on what programs might be a benefit. But that's, that's, that's the goal of Pioneer Community Energy, is help saving, you know, help provide savings and be a good community partner. So with that, um, happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for coming out. Uh, I did ask for this, and I think it's important for the community to hear what I hear every month about these programs. Um, the one thing you didn't mention that, that Pioneer does is they do a bill analysis, so they can look through your bill, and what your current bill, if you're with PG&E, and explain to you what you would save if you've switched to PG&E, or what, how, like what, even if you're with Pioneer, what your bill, each line item means, uh, which I think is great for people who are still not sure if they want to switch, or if they've already switched and they're confused as what, it seems like their rates went up even though they went down. And so I think that that's important to mention also. But, uh, the, the Pioneer has a great community relations staff. I think they're doing a great job getting the information out. I just wanted to make sure that I could do anything I could to, to get that information out as well. So, um, I, you did mention this, but I want to clarify that except for the LED bulbs, everything else, you have to be a Pioneer customer to use. Is that's right? Correct? Yeah, okay.
Is there any exception to that?
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you, it was an excellent presentation.
Thank you, thank you for having me. It was a pretty exciting night.
Oh, my gosh, yes, I do. Uh, does anybody in the public have any question? Thank you for reminding me. Does anybody in the public have any questions?
No, I was telling you. Uh, you talked about the, the bulbs, but on the slide, it said, and power strips. What kind of power strips? What is that all about?
That's a good question. I think that there's certain power strips that the way, the way they're made through this, uh, partnership is they're going to be more, uh, efficient. So that's one of the tools, one of the products that's available. There, there's, you'll, you'll see this a lot, and a lot of, a lot of the CCAs, a lot of the, the companies, the, uh, load-serving entities provide these toolboxes, and they would be more, uh, energy-efficient power strips than, uh, some other typical one that you would get. And it's very, uh, it's very local. You go to the, oh, go ahead.
Just to let you know, if you go to the store, then they can offer.
Can you, can you come up to the microphone and talk, please? Thank you.
You can purchase, we, we sell through Greenlight, uh, power strip, and it's 99 cents. So, I mean, that's a great value. Uh, but we have power strips, we have nightlights, we have LED bulbs. Those are all available at some of the retailers. If you go onto our website, we have a list of all of our retailers. And not all of them have the power strips. Um, they can choose to, to have them in their store. But the power strip, it, it accommodates eight to 10 outlets, and it's all in one, and it's 99 cents. So it's a great bargain. So I encourage you to go check them out and, uh, get some savings there.
Any other questions? Comments? Anybody online? No? Alright. Uh, thank you for coming out.
I move to, uh, make a motion to make it 9:15 or 9:30?
I second.
We still have the mosquito and...
You need another hour?
No.
Or half an hour?
Half an hour.
Okay, I second. For half an hour.
Alright, uh, so we have a motion to extend the meeting for another half an hour till 9:30?
Thank you, Lisa.
Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Uh, thank you for reminding me about that, too. Um, now we're moving on to Placer County Mosquito and Vector Control District Annual Update. Do you want to start with that, Wes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jake's walking up here and introducing him. This is our annual report, um, for, uh, what's going on with the Mosquito and Vector Control District. Also, I want to point out, in the audience is the council-appointed Representative Russ Kelly, who's with us as well today.
I do have a PowerPoint. I don't know if that was going to be.
Oh, it's here.
Yeah. Well, uh, thank you for allowing me to, uh, give you an update on the, uh, the, you know, Placer Mosquito Annual Update. Uh, I came here last year, greatly, uh, appreciate your time and effort. Um, so, so I'm Jake Hart, I'm Assistant Manager with Placer Mosquito. Um, next, please. So our district mission is really to effectively, efficiently manage the risks from vectors and vector-born diseases in Placer County. So we're talking West Nile, Chicken Gunya, so various different diseases. Um, so we are aiming to protect the public health here in Placer County. Next, please. Uh, so we are a special district, we have seven board members, um, we already talked about Russ, and we have about 25 full-time staff that, um, service all of Placer County. Next, please. So, and we break down Placer County really into three different sections, West Placer, Mid Placer, and then East Placer. West Placer, we focus on mosquitoes and West Nile. Uh, Mid Placer, we focus on still mosquitoes. They don't carry as much as disease as they do in West Placer, but we also have ticks which carry Lyme disease. Um, and then East Placer, we have yellow jackets, which don't, aren't infecting any kind of disease, but they can severely ruin someone's day. So we, uh, also help with those quite a bit. So, and then we'll help CDPH with rodents, with plague and hantavirus cases, uh, also. So what we do, we monitor all these vectors and the diseases throughout the county. Uh, we use chemical, chemical control to help get rid of these pests that are spreading these diseases. We also use biological and, um, physical controls. So biological meaning we're using mosquito fish in different areas, horse troughs, green pools, uh, low areas that may produce mosquitoes, uh, and physical control. When needed, we may remove beaver dams that are causing flooding, um, and items such as this. But we also have a huge outreach program. Um, I know earlier, heard about the bug bonanza that we ended up needing to cancel, we were just, uh, really busy and unfortunately, our PIO officer. We're hiring a new one, hopefully soon, the next couple of weeks. Uh, so we will reschedule that for the library. I know it's, uh, a great, but we have a lot of other community and school outreaches that we focus off, both here in Loomis and throughout Placer County. So, um, we also use a lot of innovation and technology. We're one of the leading districts in the nation with our drone use and how we've pushed it through, uh, really the US and a lot of mosquito control. Our General Manager Joel Bittner kind of leads that, and he's also the head of AMCA, a drone committee and future president for AMCA. So, uh, we use a lot of innovative ways, um, where we're using these drones in different AI, even to identify mosquitoes, uh, instead of using traditional microscope. Uh, also, we have two senior research scientists on staff that we use a lot of applied research, where we're asking our own questions, we're helping answering some of the citizen questions that may come to us. Uh, so we're well-staffed and, uh, educated to do the best service we can for Placer County. Next, please. So West Nile is the main thing that we want to protect the public from. West Nile is a mosquito-borne disease. It comes in birds, mostly corvids. Uh, the mosquitoes bite these birds, contract the West Nile from the bird. At that point, that's when they can bite humans and horses and transfer West Nile into humans. Uh, there is vaccines for horses, but unfortunately, not for humans available. So, um, what does West Nile do to humans? It fills, it can range, really from a cold, from allergies, all the way up to fatalities. We have fatalities every year in California, uh, in Placer County. We typically have a couple, too. So, uh, it is a portent of disease. And even though it's not fatality, we do have people who are severely affected their entire lives from West Nile. So we want to prevent that as much as we can. Uh, next. So this is hard to see, but there's little dots on this map. We set traps weekly, and we set about 60 to 70 traps just collecting mosquitoes. We take all those mosquitoes back, thousands of them. We sort out those mosquitoes, we sort out the ones that are vectors, the ones that can spread disease. We test those in-house. So for example, this week, we set traps one day, we picked them up Tuesday, um, we tested them today, we already have our results. We have, I think it was 15 different trap locations that were positive for West Nile mosquitoes. And then tomorrow night, we're doing aerial applications out in the rice in West Roseville. So we are very timely, we're very efficient, and we, um, find these diseases, and we try to knock it down as soon as possible, really before it moves into the urban areas, which will happen into July and August. As far as Loomis, um, it's usually late sea, season, August, that we start seeing West Nile pop up in the area, mostly in birds, corvids that we start finding and testing those birds. Um, but we will see it, just not as much here as, in Loomis, as in West Roseville and Lincoln. So we take all that data, um, we look at all the different mosquito species, we look at the vectors of this, the very certain species, Culex tersalis, we monitor those species, we monitor the amount of West Nile, and then we also monitor, um, the weather. And then with all that data and a lot of other data, next, please, we make decisions really to prevent, um, to help with public health. Um, so, so far this year, in all of California, there's already one human case. It's a little early, we'll start seeing human cases really develop the time, by the time they work through the medical system. Um, we usually start getting them in the end of July into August. But already 26 positive birds and almost 400 mosquito samples, usually those about 50 mosquitoes per sample. So there's a lot of, uh, West Nile here in California, um, and in particular, West Roseville. Right now, we've had the past two weeks where we've done aerial treatments to help knock down, uh, West Nile. So next, how can we help? How can citizens help? Report dead birds. If you see dead birds, we can take those birds, you can go to our website, we can actually test them, we'll swab them, uh, we'll run PCR testing on them, we'll see if those birds are infected. So we take that data, and then we'll set, if it's positive, we'll take traps, collect more mosquitoes, see if the mosquitoes are positive in the area, and then we're able to make operational decisions based on all that data, help prevent, um, public health. Uh, we can also go to our website. If, you hear people having complaints or having issues with mosquitoes, send them to our website. They can submit a report, our technicians can come out and help, they can come out and treat horse troughs, low areas, uh, they can do adulticide and larvicide applications to help knock down some of these mosquitoes. Here in Loomis, with the amount of oak trees that we were talking about earlier, older oak trees develop little cavities in them, and these will, um, breed a certain kind of aggressive species in the spring, and then they kind of slowly die away in the summer. So you guys probably have a little relief right now. But, um, we can make applications that can help knock th- those mosquitoes down. Um, but standing water, green pools, uh, dead birds, yellow jackets, ticks, um, you know, direct them to our website if you hear any questions that we can help out with. Next, please. Invasive mosquitoes, this is a new mosquito that came here in Placer County in 2019. Uh, this mosquito is more focused on Dengue, Zika, Chicken Guna. Um, we, there is one outbreak in Southern California, in San Gabriel, last year where it was locally acquired. Most of these cases are travel cases, so they're coming from different countries into California. Um, but with the expansion of this particular mosquito and, um, residents traveling in and out of the area, um, it is becoming more likely that we might have local transmission. Luckily, there has never been local transmission of these particular diseases from this species in Placer County, uh, or even SAC County, but we are trying to prevent that as much as we can. Next, please. So this is just all the work we did last year for invasive mosquitoes. I'm going to go ahead and skip to next. Uh, this, all these highlighted areas on this map are where we're currently finding these invasive mosquitoes. You can see Lincoln, uh, West Roseville, Granite Bay, Rockland, um, so all these different neighborhoods. Um, but if we focus more like what's close to Loomis, and we, uh, next, please.
Old Rockland.
Yeah, so we are finding them in Old Rockland in these communities. So they're right on your border of Loomis. Um, most likely, you have small populations in here. Um, so it's nothing to be really concerned about, but if you are experiencing any kind of daytime biting in your backyard, aggressive mosquitoes, please let us know, and so we can come out and do a property inspection and help treat for those and monitor them. So how can you protect yourself, especially with these mosquitoes, all your flower pots, all, even a bottle cap holding water can produce larvae. Uh, these things are very, uh, unique and have evolved to really, uh, focus on humans and all the trash and different things, and even not even trash, just everyday use of flower pots. And, um, so they can develop, and they prefer humans as their main blood mill instead of other species where they're focusing on birds. So the invasive species, please get all standing water in your backyard, uh, use DEET, um, spray in the evenings, especially the people out playing tennis in the evenings. You know, that's the population and all the sports, uh, that, to be aware of, to protect yourself in the evenings and the mornings when these mosquitoes are most active. Uh, make sure there's no holes in your screens, close your house, don't let them get into your house, so when you're sleeping, they're not, uh, looking for a blood mill. Uh, and then lastly, contact us, uh, when you have any, any kind of issues or problems. And we also have mosquito fish. We do a lot of mosquito fish in this area, mostly horse troughs and, uh, various other, um, sources. Once again, our website, you can sign up for our notifications and receive every time we're doing aerial, uh, aerial applications, ground applications. Um, there's a lot of good information coming through, and, uh, follow us on Instagram, all the social media. Uh, we have some great interns that are doing some great posts that are also fun to follow. Alright, questions?
So many.
Okay, I just want to, just real quick, thank you for coming out.
Yeah.
Uh, and the presentation. I want to say thanks to Russ Kelly also for being our, uh, community liaison.
He was great.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, guys. Yeah. Um, you had a question, go ahead.
Uh, no, not, just a comment. Um, thank you so much for the work that you do. Um, my husband actually did get the West Nile virus. Um, we lived in the unincorporated area of Loomis at that time. Um, and it, it was not a pleasant thing to go through at all. So, um, and then once that happened, we had all those yellow traps all over our whole community, and you guys, you know, went right to work. Um, so appreciate it, appreciate the hard work that you do, and thank you, Russ, as well.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry to hear about your husband. Hopefully, everything's worked out and...
It was, we, it took a long time to figure out what it was, because he had, you know, major headaches and kept trying to figure out what that was. And I guess it was considered like an encephalitis.
Yeah, so that's the skull of the brain.
But he laughed at all my jokes during that time. It was a double, you know, what do you call it? Silver lining. He no longer laughs at my jokes.
I just have a quick question. So, if we see a dead bird, we're supposed to call you guys? Is that...
Yeah, you can go right onto our website, and there's a form called Report a Dead Bird. You can fill it out and submit it. You don't even need to call in. If you would like to call in, we can, uh, take those in. But it's much easier just to do it online, and a technician, then you would bag it, ideally bag it, sometimes, uh, our technicians will, but set it out and our technician will come and pick it up and we'll test it.
So, just to clarify, if we saw like a dead raccoon on the road, would that be animal control? Who would we call in that regard? Recall, so we, so it actually is the, okay.
So does that include chickens? Because I see, when, just walking down Saunders, I don't know if you see it, I see dead birds and I see chickens. And I, no, they're not always bit by, uh, the neighborhood huskies.
Well, chickens are an interesting, um, bird. So they are actually, can be used as a sentinel. They don't necessarily get, they get infected by West Nile, um, but they're not going to typically die from West Nile. So, uh, many districts, and we used to hold sentinel flocks of chickens, and we would draw their blood every couple of weeks and have the blood tested to see, whether or not that particular bird was infected with West Nile. But, uh, dead chickens aren't necessarily going to help us out, uh, because most likely, they were died from something else.
But any kind of little bird, like, um, any species of bird?
Yeah, corvids are the main ones. So your scrub jays, your blue jays, your crows, uh, are most likely, but still doves and all, um, you know, all the little birds around your house, too, could potentially have it.
Okay, I'll be calling you.
Yeah. And we appreciate it.
Uh, let's open this up for public comment. Does anybody in the audience have any comments, questions, or comments they want to make? I don't see any, anybody online? Nobody? Alright, uh, did you have another comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, so about yellow jackets. What do you do there? Because I have tons of yellow jackets. Like I have old oak trees, and my just backyard is like full of hornets and yellow jackets.
Yeah, so ideally, uh, you would able to give us direction on where the nest could be. Then we have a powdered product, so they would suit up in a boost, uh, bee suit, and then they would go and apply this product directly into usually their groundwork. and then they would go and apply this product directly into usually their ground wash or yellow jackets in the ground, sometimes in the tree. But they would apply it directly, and then within a couple of days, you should see that nest just slowly dissipate.
Okay.
And they can, yellow jackets can be super aggressive.
They're in my oak trees.
Yeah.
You need to get their number.
I do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for coming up. All right, now we are on to the public hearing. Almost done.
We are.
Are we going to be done in 15 minutes? We're going to be done in 15 minutes.
I will talk fast.
Let's go.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, before I start, I want to thank Chief Deere for being a good steward and joining me in this little tag team, and even though he told me he turns into a pumpkin by 8:30 on air. But what you have before you tonight is consideration of adopting an ordinance, and the ordinance is related to the Fire Hazard Severity Zone maps. In 2000, or 2022, the California Active Assembly Bill 211 requiring local agencies to designate by ordinance moderate and high fire hazard severity zones within 120 days of receiving recommendations from the state fire marshal. February 10th, 2025, the town of Loomis received official notifications from the state fire marshal under the government code, and it is, the government code requires the implementation of the fire hazard severity zones. And has classified 1,143 acres in Loomis as moderate fire hazard zones and 1,888 acres of high fire hazard severity zones, with none designated as very high fire hazard severity zones. A map of the fire zones is attached in the packet, as well as the link in the staff report as well on there. So in accordance with state law, the town of Loomis is required to formally adopt the ordinance, the Fire Hazard Severity Zone map, classifying the moderate and high zones in the jurisdiction. With the implementation of the moderate and high zones in Loomis, AB 39 enacted in 2019 will become into effect. AB 38, excuse me, focuses on the wildfire mitigations by requiring defensible space and fire hardening measures for homes in fire-prone areas in California. So there's a merit of things that this does. Most of it is overseen by the fire district and other things. But accord, because state law requires the local jurisdiction to adopt the ordinance is why you have it for you tonight. There's implications that it has. I mean, one of the main ones is when you sell a home in one of those zones, you have to acknowledge whether or not you've done the home hardening or the defensible space and declare if you have or haven't, and that type of stuff. It will impact the material types on the, the building materials, on the, for the home hardening and those homes built or expansions done in those areas as well, too. If you have any more technical-related questions, like Chief Deere can answer that during the public comment process. But what staff is asking council to do tonight is to introduce, waive the full read and read by the title only an ordinance of the town of Loomis, of the town, excuse me, the town council of town of Loomis enacting Chapter 7.30 of Title VII Health and Safety of the Loomis Municipal Code to Adopt and Designate Fire Hazard Severity Zones. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would look to you to open up the public hearing and start the process.
All right, so let's open up, keep the public hearing. I'm sure I'm going to do this wrong. And then, does anybody on the council have any questions? No. Public comment first as the public hearing? Is that how it goes?
I can sit down.
Typically, you would give the staff report. You may ask a question or two of the staff. You have a little discussion of council, and then you open the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Take public comment, testimony, close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
So the public hearing is...
There's no right or wrong, there's no right or wrong way. That's just typically the format.
I have a comment, just real quick. So I, if you, I had asked Wes to see if he could prepare like an FAQ for this town, because there was a lot of questions I was getting. But the fire, the OSFM, whatever that means, the fire, state fire marshal? They have a website that has an FAQ on there, and it's really good, and so I would go. So the website is osfm.fire.ca.gov/Fhsz, and they have lots of information. The one thing that I just want to point out, it seems like we, as a town, were required to pass this. We can actually increase the values if we want to, but we're not allowed to decrease the values. So we can make things more severe, but we can't make them less severe. I don't know why we would do that, but just wanted to let you know. Any other questions or comments?
No, the only thing I would add to your website address is maybe we can put that on our FAQs.
Okay. All right, let's open this up for public comment, then. Did you, did you want to say something? Jean?
Yeah. Jean Wilson, 4301 Barton, and I will try to be quick because we're trying to finish. Thank you for an excellent staff report because it was very readable and to understand this. But then you get to the page with, with the map, and that's when the questions start to come up, not about the staff report or about what, what's in the law, but mainly about what does this mean to me? What does this mean for the different people in Loomis? And I think as they find out about it, that's what they're going to be wondering. What is the impact? What is the significance for any landowner that finds himself in that big orange area like the golf course and other big sections, or if you're in the moderate, the yellow sections on that map? What does that mean for you? Does it affect your insurance? Does it affect ordinances, requirements, things like that? And I think as people find out about this, there will be a lot of public questions, and I sent a letter to Wes and Christie, and he sent it on to the fire department, and I was delighted to get a very helpful reply the same day back. And one of the last things on, on that was a possible suggestion that the town have information, possibly workshop, or some other kind of way to help educate the public to find out what does this mean for me. So maybe, maybe we want some, an FAQ page on our website with the references to where you can find out more, more information. Christie was, we were trying to find out on ours, so my husband superimposed an assessor's parcel map on to the, the hazard map to find out, okay, what is really involved in ours? And Christie pointed out to me, we didn't have to go to that work because there is one of their maps that you can look at it and find out directly where, what's on your parcel. And that, that reference, I think, would be helpful to people if we were, say, having a website. And she also showed me the previous map, and maybe we could have a reference to that so people could see what, what the change has been for them, or if there isn't any and it's pretty much the same, then they wouldn't be so concerned. So my suggestion is that maybe we do a website with an FAQ, and maybe at some point we would want to have some public workshops or something so people could find out more about what the requirements are, what hardening means, who is required to do what, when would those things kind of come into play so that, basically, a public education kind of thing, maybe. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Anybody else? Anybody online? Okay. All right. And so I'm going to close the public hearing. I just want to, real quick, all of the things that you asked about, Jean, are on that website that I talked to you. And so the way I found it was I just did a Google search for fire hazard severity zones, and it wasn't the first one, but it was one of the first ones, yeah.
It's, it's on our website. We do have it on our website. We have the map, and then the link to the site where you can enter your address and see your particular parcel, and then some frequently asked questions.
Excellent. Thank you. So with that, I need a motion, and we want to probably approve the recommended action. It's probably the right way to go with it, since he read it all or...
Wes already read the ordinance when you made the recommended action. So just so you know, as a council, in order, under state law, you have to read the entire ordinance before you introduce it or adopt it, unless you just read the title. So you read the title.
Which is what he did.
You can basically say, "Motion to contribute the ordinance as a recommended action."
Do I have such a motion?
I'll make a motion, like what he just said. No, to approve the recommended staff.
I second.
I second.
All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. Let's do roll call, please. Carol.
Councilmember Clark Retz.
Aye.
Councilmember Cortez.
Aye.
Councilmember Youngblood.
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright.
Aye.
Mayor Ring.
Yes. All right, five minutes. Can we do council committee reports in five minutes? We're going to do it. Does anybody have anything to report? No. Nope. I just have, everybody's working on budgets for me, so it's like every, that's all I have to report. My next Saturday meeting is August 9th from 10:00 a.m. noon at the library. You have anything?
I go.
You have anything? All right, we did it.
Mr. Mayor, before you close, I know it's not Anthony Demetakis that let you know he's on it already for the tennis courts. He's going to talk to the county about funding.
Nice, excellent. Thank you. All right, let's adjourn.